All right. Good morning, and I'd like to welcome everyone to the Lane County Board of Commissioners meeting for this January 12th, 2016. Bear with me today. Hopefully, it'll get back into this chair mode, and we'll do good. So, the first item is Item 1, which is the adjustments to the agenda. Do we have any adjustments? Commissioner Bozovic?
Yeah, I'd like to pull Item 5(c)(1) from the consent calendar for discussion.
Okay. Anything else?
I thought, in reviewing the agenda last night, that there was a part of the agenda that was on the consent calendar, and that it was also part of the regular meeting schedule. Is that accurate?
You'll have to give me just a little bit more information. Is there something on the consent that's tied to a...
Yeah, it's tied, let's see, it's, uh, I think it is...
Oh, the Department of Forests? Three, no, let's see.
How about if I reserve that and come back to that? And just say, when we get to the consent calendar...
Be quiet, Artu. Okay. Any other adjustments? Okay. Seeing none, then we will move to public comment. At this time, we reserve time for the public to speak, but I'm seeing that we have nobody here for that item. So, we'll move to Item 3, which today would be, I guess, comments from our commissioners in regards to issues or remonstrance. Comments? Commissioner Artson?
I'll just say that it was a pleasure to go to the town hall meeting that Senator Merkley had in Coburg on Saturday. It was very well attended. Probably, I don't know, 300 people at the International Order of Odd Fellows across from the Coburg City Hall, filled to the brim. Head of the public town hall, which they issued these tickets where you can get your number to, and they called the number, so it was completely at random as to who got to ask questions. It was interesting, just the type of questions that were asked, and a range of questions, which I think there was one question that Senator said he really didn't know anything about, but he would find out, and others, he handled, you know, gave his opinion and gave some facts on all of them. It was very educational. And one of the things he does, I went to his town hall meeting in Lynn County a year ago in January, and one of the things he does is he has a meeting ahead of time with local officials, and I went to that, and the mayor of Coburg was there, the city councilors, a few of them, school board member, or charter school advocates for Coburg that has its own charter school. Quite interesting, and just a lot of issues. I bought, courtesy of Mr. Mokrheyski, I bought the jail fact sheet and gave it to Senator Merkley about the number of jail beds that we had, and the number of jail beds that we have, just for his information. Sounds good.
Great, thank you. Other comments? Commissioner Liken?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yesterday, at the Association of Oregon Counties Legislative Committee meeting, we received what I consider to be a very excellent update from Judge Grasty in Harney County, and kind of what's going on there. And the reason why I say that is it was unfiltered, so you're not getting a newspaper account or a television account, you're getting directly from the person who is basically in charge. So, he, as we know, here, a lot of the eastern, or several of the eastern Oregon counties, the chair of the board is actually called the judge, and so the judge, and then along with two commissioners. So, Judge Grasty is the chair of the Harney Board of Commissioners. And during that time, the Association of Oregon Counties brought forth a resolution, and to be, which was voted on yesterday, wasn't unanimous, but it was pretty close. It was, there was significant debate regarding the resolution, and that we passed in support of Harney County, but I think the really key piece of this is really the second paragraph, and that is, "The issue of federal land management has been on top of the AOC radar screen for many years. The Association intends to redouble efforts to work with Oregon congressional delegation and federal agencies to give Oregon's rural communities a voice in decisions that impact their livelihoods and a way of life." And I think that's so key, because while this is happening in Harney County, we have our own issues here in Lane County, and really in the southwest counties, when it comes to the management of our federal forests. So, I supported the resolution. I thought the resolution was strong in its statement, and I think we all appreciated the, really what I consider to be the unfiltered take from Judge Grasty on what's going on in Harney County. I think, at times, when you read the media, it's not quite, there seems to be a take on it of which way, you know, they want to report on. So, I think just getting it straight from what you call a horse's mouth was very informational, and very appreciated that Judge Grasty was, and he obviously wasn't in person, he was on the phone with us, and so, because his hands are pretty full over there, but pretty tied, but I think it was a great update from him, and very appreciative, I think, of what's really happening there in Harney County. Thank you.
Others? Commissioner Thorntons?
Mr. Chair, when it's appropriate, I would like to go back to your adjustments to the agenda, because I found the discrepancy on the agenda.
Commissioner Farr?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, Commissioner Thorntons, I was not able to attend Senator Merkley's meeting on Saturday. I was sick in bed all day, and it's a good thing that I stayed in bed, because I felt better on Sunday, but my wife did attend, and very well attended, a lot of people there. Parking was a difficult situation, as it can be in Coburg. But, one thing I heard from a number of people was it was kind of surprising, what was reported in the newspaper the next day, didn't really too closely match what the general tone of the discussion at Merkley's Town Hall. The headlines talked about things that were just barely brushed on in Merkley's Town Hall, whereas other things that were talked about more thoroughly, didn't really seem to make the newspaper. Kind of curious about how that happens, but I guess that kind of thing does happen. The other thing I'd like to mention, Mr. Chair, is that Operation 365, which we've been talking about for some time, has concluded. We're waiting for the numbers to come in, and on January 25th, I'm going to be prepared to have a press, a release, a general release on what the actual numbers are regarding housing 365 homeless veterans and their families in Lane County. I expect to release that we will be successful, in fact, I'm confident that we are successful. The only reason for the delay in the release is that we're waiting for the actual, exact numbers to come in regarding how many veterans have been housed over the course of, from November 2014 to December 31st, 2015. Successful endeavor that we engaged in, in that we had a very specific number. The other veterans' housing issue that we had last year was what's called the Mayor's Challenge. It was a nationwide mayor's challenge to achieve functional zero in unhoused veterans in a community or a county, and we did take that challenge. Functional zero is a little bit nebulous in terms of what the definition is. We're waiting until more numbers come in before we can determine whether or not, or how close, we achieved functional zero. It's not a mathematical term, seemingly. Zero seems to be zero in math, but functional zero, when it comes to reporting to the federal government, is going to be a different thing, depending on which agency you're talking to. So, I do have the numbers on Operation 365, and the number I show here is 348, but we're waiting for the December numbers to come in, so that's what I believe is going to push us over 365. The other thing that I'll mention is something that we've all talked about up here, and that is, that is the subject of early childhood homelessness. And Commissioner Bozovic has been very closely in touch with the 15th Night Initiative that discusses what happens after a child has been homeless for a period of time. At what point in time does it become a chronic issue that is much more difficult to reverse? Oregon is, has the dubious distinction of being the number five state in early childhood homelessness, at 7.2 percent. We're behind some really notable states, Kentucky, Alabama. So, we're at 7.2 percent, according to the numbers that we're looking at. So, it's not a very good distinction to have, and it's something that we all need to pay much more focus on, discussing how do we find ways to put kids in homes. We focused very heavily on veterans last year. We've always been focusing on making sure that kids are housed, and you know, you think about it, I, when my daughter Haley was seven years old, I looked, at the time I was working with Fruitful County, and I wondered, what would it be like if my daughter didn't know where her next meal was coming from? Or would it be like if my daughter didn't know where she was going to sleep tonight? What would it be like if my daughter had to make bad decisions about staying dry overnight? So, it's something that we need to pay much greater attention to than we have, even though we have paid attention to it, and it's something that this year, it'll be a main focus of mine, is how do we make certain that kids don't spend that 15th night on the street, so that kids are finding ways to get into housing? Thank you.
Others? Okay. With that, Commissioner Thorntons, and we'll go back to the adjustments to the agenda.
Yeah, it's on the consent calendar, and it's listed as Item A2, Order 16-01-12-02, in the matter of appointing a committee of three to five individuals to draft an impartial, simple, and understandable explanatory statement for the May 17 voters pamphlet regarding the question of financing the Oregon State University Extension Service.
Okay, so you want to pull that one for conversation?
Yeah.
It's also as Item 7e.
Yeah, and at 7e, it says 16-01-12-8, in the matter of appointing a committee of three to five individuals to draft an impartial, simple, and understandable.
That one's for the, that's for the...
Oh, they're different topics. One's on the district, and one's, okay.
The OS2 extension, last week.
That's where I think it's a misunderstanding.
This week, we have the...
It's my misunderstanding, and the only amendment I'll make to it then is to say, I think we should discuss Item A, or, yeah, A2.
So, you want to pull it for discussion?
Yeah, A2. And it'll be simple and understandable, then.
All right. Anything else? All right, seeing nothing, we'll move to, next is, I believe, emergency business. Do we have any emergency business?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Then we're on to the consent calendar, Item 5. These items are generally considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners, and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion unless the items are pulled from the consent calendar. We do have two items, Item 5(a)(2) and Item 5(c)(1). I would look for a motion to approve as amended. Commissioner Bozovic?
So, I'll move approval of the consent calendar, less Items 5(a)(2) and 5(c)(1).
Second.
Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes 5-0. Next, we will move to Item 6, which is, well, actually, we will deal with the two items we pulled. Sorry about that. We will start with Item 5(a)(2), and I will look to Commissioner Thorntons for this discussion.
Yeah, I noticed that in the proposed order, there's a list of names of people, Julie Smith, Mike LaJune, Alan Bass, Ginny Grilli, and Cindy Land. I'm wondering if, how these people were selected, if you could give us some description of what their role is in this process, and how they were selected.
Chairman Stewart and Commissioner Thorntons, for the record, Alex Kyler, your Governmental Relations Manager. The Lane Code has a section in it that requires that if the board is sending something to the ballot, that you will create an explanatory statement writing committee, and it gives the guidance, three to five people. It speaks to the balanced nature of those folks, in terms of being supporters, or folks who are opposed, and at least one who's neutral. Frankly, in my experience of trying to identify these people for both that committee and the other committee that you'll be taking up today as part of your regular meeting, it's a little awkward asking people to identify where they may be, on something that's typically a fairly private matter, unless they choose to discuss it. But, we did ask the proponents of the measure. There were a number of folks who testified at the public hearing last week, to come up with some names, which they did provide, and then the remainder of the names, I sort of talked to some other staff about folks that we might reach out to, and that's how we came up with the five names.
Yeah, well, my question is, we're supposed to appoint people that are for the measure and opposed to the measure, and neutral on the measure. So, my question is, when the materials state the names, but it doesn't state what position on the committee that they're being appointed to. So, for example, Ms. Smith, is she for, against, or neutral? And Ms. Land, is she for, against, or neutral? So that we know, so the board knows that we are fulfilling our responsibilities. I get it that you talked to a lot of people, and that these five names have appeared. I just would like to know further whether we are, in fact, meeting the obligation of appointing the people, the correct people, to the thing. So, who's for it, who's against it, and who's neutral?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Thorntons, again, I don't know that, in looking at the code, frankly, I was, you know, after the end of this, would like to make a recommendation that the code be changed in this manner. I don't think it's appropriate that in a public meeting or a public document, that we identify those folks that are potentially opposed, or I did my best to find a balanced committee for the board to adopt, but I didn't feel it was appropriate to title them a supporter or an opposer.
Are we required to appoint people whose views we don't know? In other words, you're correctly pointing out, well, it's not normal that government would inquire as to someone's political views. It wouldn't say, you can't serve on this committee unless you're really in favor of this, right? Normally, we wouldn't do that. Normally, we would say, we want people to come on a committee and really look at all the issues, and try to come up with a good decision. We wouldn't necessarily start out with pro, con, and neutral, but that apparently is the rule, and that's why I'm asking, because in the past, I'll just mention this, in the past, we've put out a notice to the public, the board's going to be referring something to the ballot, in order to put it out for a ballot, we're going to have to have a ballot statement to explain it, explanatory statement, and we're going to need people that are for, against, and neutral. So, if you're for, or against, or neutral, we want to hear from you, because we want to appoint you to this committee if you're qualified.
Chairman Stewart and Commissioner Thorntons, we've done it a couple different ways, actually. When I looked at how we did the jail levy, the board order just stated that the board would appoint a committee of three to five individuals without naming anybody. In the vehicle registration fee, I believe it was, we identified the five individuals in that particular order. So, at least in my experience, we've done this in two different ways.
Okay.
Where we haven't identified, we just said, there will be this committee, and then that committee got, you gave direction to staff to go get the committee and to review the document.
Okay.
In the last case, you actually did identify, and I wasn't involved with that committee. I don't know to the extent, I know that in the board order, it doesn't identify the people as being opposed or supportive.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I mean, it was uncomfortable for me, as I was reaching out to these people, to say, are you a supporter, or which column do you sort of fall into? I mean, it's just not something I would normally ask of...
Yeah, and I think that you're right. Maybe this is a follow-up to this meeting, and that is, maybe what we should do is, number one, at the staff level, thank you for doing all this work, because it is hard getting people to serve on these committees, and it is hard to figure out, you know, who would be the appropriate person, and I'm not in any way saying you didn't do the right thing. I think you did the right thing, and I really appreciate it, and I think our thanks is to keep this moving. But, maybe a follow-up is to take up your idea of maybe clarifying our code, and really seeing whether or not, in the responsibility we have to submit a ballot statement, an explanatory statement, that will be respected by the public as being, you know, this simple and fair explanatory statement, that we more carefully refine the process by which we invite people, that we decide whether we want them to identify pro, con, and neutral or not, and how other jurisdictions do it, in terms of how they, you know, pick the people, other cities, other counties, that are under the same basic state law we're under. So, you know, with that, I don't have any objections to what we're doing here. I did have questions about who these people were, and what their, you know, what their qualifications are. I think in the past, haven't we done fewer numbers, when we've had trouble recruiting? We've just done three, rather than five?
Chairman Stewart and Commissioner Thorntons, I'm not sure. This is the first time that I've actually had this piece of responsibility, in terms of developing. I know the code does speak to three to five, and, you know, I sort of contemplated that. In this case, there were a lot of proponents. There are a lot of proponents, and so, to find somebody who's sort of skeptical is, you know, they weren't, they didn't testify, there was nobody to, I was hoping at the public hearing, that would be where we would identify some folks who might be, you know, sort of on that side.
But, they all came to say they were for it.
They all did, yes.
And then, the other thing is, do they have to be residents of the proposed district? Or they just have to be county electors?
Chairman Stewart, Commissioner Thorntons, the code is silent on that. When we bring up the other item later today, we did make sure they were residents of the district, the proposed district. For the Extension Service, it's a general levy across the county.
Commissioner Farr?
Thank you, and I wanted to thank Commissioner Thorntons for bringing this up, and also thank you for acknowledging Mr. Kyler's work in moving forward quickly with getting this presentation before us, because there is a time constraint on this. We need to get the language together fairly quickly. But, Mr. Mokrheyski, what Mr. Kyler points out is something that I believe has been characteristic of your term, shall we say, since you got here. We're identifying things that the county does, that we do it just because that's the way we've done it, and that's not always the right way to do it. And we're taking things one at a time, one bite at a time, addressing things, changing code where code needs to be changed, changing process and procedure the way it needs to be changed. And I can, and we have a list of things that have happened since you were hired, Mr. Mokrheyski, and I'd like to say that we are progressing in that direction. That does not mean to say that every day, we're not going to find something that should be changed, that we're doing just because that's the way we've been doing it. And, Mr. Kyler, thank you, I'll join Commissioner Thorntons in thanking you for getting this together. First time you've ever done it, you did a good job, you got it to us in a timely fashion, which was probably the most important element on this particular issue. And I just wanted, once again, I'd join Commissioner Thorntons in thanking you for the work done. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Liken?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If this is an item that would be brought up during Agenda Team request, I think it's worthwhile to have this conversation with the board, and to direct staff, maybe to, maybe in a sense, codify the code, so there isn't any sort of confusion. I will say on the jail levy, because I was actually involved in that as chair, but we did have two opposed, two for, and one neutral, and I thought it came out quite well, in that, I thought the arguments were very good, moving forward. But, I do, I would hope that this would be brought up as an Agenda Team request, so I'm looking at Commissioner Thorntons, if that's something, because I would support that of having this conversation.
Okay. Any further comments? And I would entertain a motion to approval of Order 16-01-12-02, in the matter of appointing a committee of three to five individuals to draft an impartial, simple, and understandable explanatory statement for the May 17, 2016 voters pamphlet regarding the question of financing Oregon State University Extension Service operations.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimous. So, the next item is 5(c)(1). This item is a public works item, it's Order 16-01-12-06, in the matter of entering into a memorandum of understanding between the county and the Department of Land Conservation and Development for the drafting of model farm, forest, and marginal land zoning regulations. We have Ms. McKinney here, Commissioner Bozovic, you asked for it to be pulled.
Thank you. I pulled this in particular because there's, in the project objective of major deliverables in the memorandum of understanding, it speaks to, this will include non-discretionary amendments to reflect state statutes and changes, which is pretty straightforward. We understand that's kind of code cleanup, but then it says, it'll also include discretionary amendments, where the county will have to decide between various options and all that. And my concern is, is there's no, it doesn't look to be, in the project scoping, a place where we come back to the Board of Commissioners to provide policy direction on the discretionary items. I'm very concerned that the LCDC and staff go off in a corner and start working on these items, and my concerns about maintaining private property rights for our citizens, to the maximum extent possible, and keeping economic development opportunities open to rural residents to the maximum extent possible, may end up not being honored so much in some of the discretionary items. So, I'm wondering if there's a place we can roll into the scope of work to come back to the board and check in on, and get policy direction relative to discretionary amendments to the code for these rural comprehensive plan zones that are under this work item. It's a little concerning to me, because I have not always been in alignment with the LCDC staff when it comes to some of these issues, and I want to make sure the board controls how these discretionary items move forward, and I don't see that built into this contract.
Ms. McKinney?
Thank you, Chair Stewart, Commissioner Bozovic. Actually, it is built into the contract, and if there's some changes in the language the board would direct us to do, we certainly can do that. It is absolutely our intent to vet any discretionary changes with the planning commission first to get their recommendation, as we do, and then finally with the Board of County Commissioners. And some of the tasks actually have some information about preparation for those planning commission meetings and the Board of County Commissioner meetings. So, as you mentioned, Commissioner Bozovic, some of these, the state DLCD is providing technical assistance to counties to do these updates specifically to our farm, forest, and marginal land zones. They're providing that assistance, not cash, in terms of a grant, but anything that has, you know, the whole process will be run like any type of a land use, where we'll do, you know, provide public information, go to the planning commission, have public hearings, as I said, and then come to the Board of County Commissioners. And there may be some additional discussions, work sessions, built in, depending on what we, with your direction, of course, decide that we want to take on in this particular code amendment process. I'll remind the board that it's on the long-range work plan to actually do a major re-hall of Chapter 16. And this opportunity came to light after we'd adopted the work plan last year, and we got the approval from the board to move forward with the request from, to receive this assistance from DLCD. But, that doesn't negate the fact that we still have this long-term kind of reopening of the entire Chapter 16, and what we are thinking is that this will provide us an opportunity to, you know, go out with these relatively housekeeping-type measures, get those done quickly and relatively easily, you know, with the public. And then, that will sort of set the framework for us being able to go out and talk about the fact that we will be really revamping Chapter 16, and again, that will have a very, I would anticipate, detailed public involvement plan, and kind of much input from the board in terms of how you'd like us to proceed with that. But, again, I direct to Commissioner Bozovic to, you know, Task 3 in the scope talks about the ordinance... about the ordinance amendment adoption, and again, that's where it refers to the Planning Commission and the board. So if there's additional language, as you say, that the board wants us to add, we're certainly open to doing that.
Yeah, I guess so. I, sorry, Chair. So I have two questions. One, is there a timing issue with approving this? Are we under a deadline to get this, to approve this for the assistance? And second, is there the ability? Because once you get to the Planning Commission of a draft ordinance, we've kind of lost the opportunity to guide policy-wise. I'd like to see our ability as a board to have input earlier on in the process than once we've got a model ordinance going to the Planning Commission. That's usually way beyond giving direction and policy in which direction we want to go on discretionary items. So that's my concern, is as the MOU is written right now, that's not specifically built into the process. So is there time to go back and redraft this and have it come back to the board, or are we under a deadline to accept the assistance from DLCD?
Well, we're not under any deadlines specifically. The way that this MOU was drafted, it actually anticipates us completing this process by June. So what we want to do is, and we actually have had our first, you know, discussion with the consultant, so it would just delay our ability to move forward. Honestly, I think that if the board was comfortable, I wouldn't pull staff off of the work. We've already sort of started reviewing the model ordinances just to begin the preparation. So again, if you'd like, if the board directs, we can add a work session before we go to the Planning Commission. If that's, again, the board's direction, we certainly can do that. I would want to also just make sure that we've built in enough time into the MOU so that we don't have a deadline that we can't meet.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, we have noticed it nine thirty times certain.
That's correct. So my question, Ms. McKinney, is, I did receive three calls yesterday in regards to this item. I didn't have a chance to prepare for comments, and I'm wondering, is it possible just to move this item to our next meeting on the 26th?
Certainly.
And have it as an agenda item? Possibly that would give folks time to make any comments, maybe look at a proposal to meet Commissioner Bozovic's suggestion of a little more board engagement through the process.
And we're coming before you to discuss our long-range work plan with Kier Miller, and he's the project manager for this, so that would work out just fine. We'd be happy to do that.
So if I don't see any opposition from the board, I'd like to have this item moved to the 26th. Okay? All right. Thank you. Now we will move to our, we'll move on down the agenda. We have a nine thirty time certain. It's Item 7B under Administration. It's a report back from the Oregon Department of Forestry. We have with us today Link Smith, Oregon Department of Forestry, Western Lane District Forester, and Greg Wagenblast, who is the Oregon Department of Forestry's South Cascades District Manager. I'd like to welcome them, and please join us here at the table. We have a list of items, an update and check-ins, and we have the 2015 fire season, and we have a discussion on Oregon Department of Forestry fire funding. So, good morning and welcome.
Thank you.
And just a reminder for myself, we do have a ten o'clock time certain, so we'll try to.
We'll keep it, we'll keep you within the timeframe there, then.
I'm not worried about you, it might be us that's the issue.
No, we appreciate that. Thank you for having us back again. We'll roll right into this. Just a quick overview, after our last meeting, we told you that we would come back with a, again, a fire season review, and then more importantly, to kind of move forward with our forest land classification procedures. So what you'll see, one of the things you'll see in front of you that we're going to address first would be the list of names that we have for you. As a requirement of that, we need three names appointed by the commissioners here to serve as part of that committee. And so what we've done is, between Greg and I, compiled a list of, a list of five individuals there. We need three. Those, of course, you can appoint someone else if you'd like. Those are just three folks that we thought would give you a few, or five folks that we thought would give you an idea with there to take a look at. So I don't know how much time you want to do that or get back with us on that, but at this time, anyway, just.
That was the phone call message that I was unable to return.
So again, you can kind of take their time on that if you wish, and get back with us in a short time order if you'd like to study that a little bit. You don't have to give us that information today.
Okay, so we got the names recommend, you know, to suggest here. And what I'd like to do is we'll give this to the agenda team, and we'll have it as an item to have the board choose three of those folks, okay? Or others as may come up. Is that all right?
Very well.
You want that sooner than later, I assume, right?
It's, you know, always sooner is better, but that's, we've got work that we're completing right now, getting things in preparation for that committee to get together, so it's not extremely time sensitive, no.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
Okay, so we're going to run through Fire Season 2015 for you statewide, then we'll cover our two districts, and then at the end of it, Link's going to go over the fire funding and hopefully we'll be able to answer some of those questions for you as well. So, sorry. Fire Season 2015 was a busy season around the state. We came in last spring, talked with you guys about just the conditions we were in. This chart here, basically, it's just showing the last 2012, 2013, 2014, the progression of the drought and how it was moving up into the northwest. This next slide here covers 2015, and as you guys know, you guys declared a drought emergency in the county. A number of other counties within the state of Oregon also declared that with the governor. And so it set up the state for some high wildfire risk, and these three charts here just show you the progression of the wildfire risk across basically the northwest and the west, western part of the US. You know, and you can see how it just, as the tail end of the summer got here, all of Oregon was pretty much red for high fire risk. So the state ODF went out and procured a number of aviation assets, and this just shows the distribution that we had them scattered around the state for initial attack and extended attack. You know, it didn't eliminate any resources from any part of the state. We had them scattered even up in the northwest. So there was helicopters, airplanes, detection planes, and what we call SEATs, which are single-engine air tankers. They are just a mini version of a large air tanker that's able to come in and drop retardant. This here just kind of goes through the, you know, it quantifies the visual that we just showed of how many of each of those aircrafts. So, you know, when we get lightning come through our areas across the state, we try to put up detection planes, and those can be just small planes with a couple of folks in it, a pilot and an observer, looking for, you know, the smoke to pop up to be able to get initial attack. Resources sent out to those quickly and keep the fires from getting large at all. And then also, the state of Oregon procured one single large air tanker. And this is all, you know, state resources, not to include what the federal government also had, the Forest Service, BLM, also had resources out there as well on top of these. Around the state of Oregon, there were a number of large fires that did occur. This just gives you a taste of those large fires and where they were located at. With that, the Department of Forestry, we deployed our incident management teams eight times this summer on fires. In one of the handouts I provided you from the Northwest Coordination Center, I think it called, or it reports in there that there were 56 or 58 incident management team deployments across Oregon and Washington. So it was a busy season, and you guys probably saw on the news quite a bit of the activity that was going on up in eastern Oregon and up into eastern Washington. The number of acres burned the last three years have been extremely busy seasons for, around the state, and these are the number of acres that the Department of Forestry's been involved with on our acres that we protect. And you can see in there that 2015 was right in the mix with the last two years. So it's been three extremely busy seasons for the agency as a whole. The number of fires, this just shows a trend since 1960 of the number of acres and the number of fires statewide that our agency's been involved with that occurred on protected lands by the Department of Forestry. You know, we get the cycles where some, you know, for several years, you get really busy activity, and then it kind of slows down for a little bit, and then it picks up again. So the last, you know, three years have kind of been that uptick of extreme activity and lots of fire activity for our staff and our resources.
Mr. Chair, me a question about that slide.
Oh, yes.
You say on agency-protected acres burned, that is strictly agency-protected, that, does that include private property as well as public land?
It includes all lands that are protected by the Department of Forestry, so it does not include Forest Service land or BLM land outside of the western, you know, the BLM lands on the east side of Oregon. Also, you know, like fish and wildlife lands, US fish and wildlife lands, some of the federal agencies that are not protected by Department of Forestry. So it would include, you know, all, the private lands within our districts, state lands, BLM lands in western Oregon, and a little bit of BLM lands over towards Clamath Falls.
Okay. So it does include our wonderful Tillamook Forest, then?
Yeah, it does cover Tillamook Forest.
I'm from Tillamook County, lived in that forest. Thank you.
So with the last three busy seasons, with that comes expenses. And so this shows the trend of where we've been or where our agency's at currently with expenditures. The Department of Forestry's expended on firefighting activities for, since 2005, and you can see that the last three years have been extremely on the high end of costs. One of the things with that is these are gross numbers, and you can see the green little circles in there. Those do indicate, those have been some, we've had some FEMA-eligible fires, and so FEMA's reimbursing the department for some of those expenses on those fires for, you know, a certain window of time based on their criteria. We talk about for our agency, the complete and coordinated system, and this just gives you a flavor of all those folks that are involved with our level of fire protection within the Department of Forestry and how we work together with a number of entities or agencies to fight fire within, you know, Oregon and provide that protection. So that was statewide. Here locally, in Lane County, South Cascade District, it's made up of two associations of membership by landowners up in Lynn County and here in eastern Lane County. The associations and the agency have been providing fire protection for over 100 years within our district. So our fire season started June 16th, and it ended on October 26th when the fall rains got here. So we were in fire season for 132 days. This chart here just kind of shows you, the red line is our energy release component, which is what we track for looking at fire danger, and the red line is this current year, 2015. The blue line is 2014. And so you can see that we were setting some record trends in parts of the year with our fire danger. Industrial fire, you know, this was a big thing with the activity going on around the state and the fire danger that we had. We actually went into industrial fire precaution Level 4, which shut down a lot of the, or all the activity, logging activities and industrial activities out in the woods for 15 days this summer. On top of that, we ran a Level 3, which puts a lot of restrictions on the operators out there for another 16 days. So, you know, the impact to logging within our district was pretty significant for folks trying to be able to do any commercial operations out there in the woods. So, you know, it was, some pressure was put on the landowners and the operators. Along with that, public use restrictions, you know, we ramped it up and then ramped it back down as the fall rains got here, and so, you know, we limited campfires to designated campgrounds at one point, and then it got dry enough that we actually shut down campfires totally, even in the campgrounds. And there was a conversation that was had with a lot of the camp facilities, like state parks, the county parks, the BLM, and all of them were in support of shutting campfires off during that, those conditions. With that, our district, South Cascade District, we had 39 statistical fires, which were fires that were on protected land by the Department of Forestry. We also made 25 runs providing assistance to other agencies, and then we rolled equipment 149 times on other reports of fire that were smoke chases or other activities that resulted in not having a campfire specifically. So there's a breakdown there of the number of fires and the acres burned based on the different categories that we have. For our district, we didn't really have any large significant fires that burned a number of acres and were on the district. So with that, I'll turn it over to Link for Western Lanes.
I'll let you look at my slides. I forgot to let you run the button there. That first slide here, you could back up to that. I apologize, that should be later actually in the program, but it introduces the Western Lane District. You heard Greg mention a SEAT earlier, a single-engine air tanker, and that's one of our SEATs in action right there on the Chambers Mill fire this summer, which I'll cover more of here in a moment. But during that fire, we had three of these single-engine air tankers working for us, and really a tool that the agency is really starting to grab hold of and really working well for us. But kind of a neat photo of that Chambers Mill fire there. Similar to Greg, I'll speak into the microphone, let you guys look at the board there. Similar to Greg, our fire season, 132 days, similar conditions. We're talking Lane County for the most part, so I won't spend a lot of time there, but bottom line is, again, we hit some pretty high standards following our 30-year drought. We were at some pretty rough conditions for a large part of the summer. Our season usually only runs in that 100-day category typically, and we're up around 132 this year. Look at the industrial fire program there. Once again, shadowing what Greg said, we had quite an impact on industrial operators this year. A Level 3 shuts cable yarding down at 1 o'clock, or I'm sorry, it's cable yarding down altogether. So if you look between that Level 3 and the Level 4, steep country that we operate in, having them shut down for over a month is a significant impact to the local operators and industrial community out there. Again, looking at our regulated use, Greg and I talk an awful lot because of our conditions are so similar there. So typically, our dates run pretty concurrent as to when we go into regulated use, when we go into fire season. Basically, with the impact on his side of the freeway and my side of the freeway are pretty similar. So again, I won't spend too much time talking on that one. Next one's just our annual, I like to throw that in there. That's our picture of our fire crew this year. You know, we have pictures like this dating back into the 50s, so it's kind of a history there, and I just wanted to throw that up there.
I may be in some of those pictures.
What's that?
I may be in some of those pictures in what county?
In what county?
Tillamook.
In Tillamook. Then if you look at our statistical fires there, we ran 48 fires over the summer. I think a couple of points of interest there is if you look at the industrial community, .1 acre their equipment use on industrial, and we had some debris burning, which are basically slash burnings, but that, you know, that really isn't the cause of our issues there. This year, it was human-caused fires. You said equipment use non-industrial is a pretty big category, but that number's pretty high specifically because of that one Chambers Mill fire. One other point of interest there is of an interesting fire we had this year is we spent $20,000 on an exploding target fire during a bachelor party, of all things. But they were doing some exploding targets, and the very first one, they shot, started a fire that cost us right around $20,000 to suppress, but that will be recovered in a cost recovery case, so just a point of interest.
A lot of kegs of beer.
Our main, the main talk of our- Our main, the main talk of our summer here as far as our big fire was the Chambers Mill Fire where you saw that seat operating. We actually had three single-engine air tankers and a heavy air tanker out of Medford working on that. That started on, I believe it was the 12th to 13th of August. I already forget, I apologize. But wind-driven fire, burning toward Cottage Grove, Crestwell Country, started right off of territorial highway. There's a little view of the, a picture of it there. It ended up burning 180 acres between BLM and private. One other kind of interesting thing there is that before the smoke was totally out in the mop-up phase, the private landowner was salvage logging that. So if you're driving out on territorial highway right now, it looks like a clear cut because they, they just salvage logged all the damaged trees on the private acreage there. That fire was particularly challenging to us. We, you know, it was a, as Greg covered pretty well there, pretty significant fire load throughout the state. So we ended up managing that as a type three incident, had a fire camp right there at our office. We housed about 90 people there, fed them, showered them. And it was, it was quite a significant impact on the district. But there weren't a lot of resources available out there. So we had to, we couldn't find a shower unit, for instance, anywhere. So we were trying to shower that many people in our two little local showers on the district. But we were able to pull it off. Now that just gives you the cost of that fire, 800-acre fire, right around $765,000 in suppression costs. Didn't lose any homes. We had some great help from our sister agencies there. And you talk about complete and coordinated system, we never found the cause of it. We believe it was a piece of machinery that sparked on the side of the road. Part of the reason we believe that is we had a few reports of people seeing that. But literally 20 minutes after this fire started, we had two other fires start in that kind of the Gimble Hill country there. And for lack of better words, we ignored them because we were so hung up trying to stop this thing. And Eugene and Lane Fire totally handled those fires without us. So that's again, to speak to the cooperation that we have amongst the agencies. And I know I stole an awful lot of equipment and people from Greg and neighboring districts as well. But it was neat to have that kind of a partnership, them recognizing what we had there. And then there's just one more photo, the Chambers Mill Fire, how close it came to some structures. And if you're familiar with territorial highway out there, you'd recognize that barn and that equipment. And it's easier to see that equipment now that the grass was gone. But did some great work there. Then moving to the last one, that's a hard picture to see. The one in your printout's a little bit better. But that's a lightning fire we had on December 10th of this year. So it wasn't a lot of thread to spread, but it's a pretty interesting photo. If you look at the shrapnel from that tree, there are significant sizable chunks of wood just blown an unbelievable distance from the actual strike where that smoke is. So this certainly shows the power of what some of those strikes can do. So I thought I'd throw that in there for interest. And then Commissioner Farr specifically, you, you asked a few questions on our funding last time. So I thought we'd throw a, Greg and I talked and we threw this slide in there. We've heard comments that our agency has one of the most complex funding sources of all the other, of all the agencies out there. But this gives you just a little idea there. And to start at the bottom, you see that base 48 million. That's what we budget for every year, based on our assessments, how many acres are out there. Greg's my district, we all do our own budget processes. So we cover basically all of our standard initial attack kind of stuff there. Then you see the next levels of statewide severity. We put a lot of extra resources on in years like this, severity resources, helicopters, air tankers, sometimes crews. And that's kind of split funded between the Oregon Forest Land Protection Fund and General Fund. That's kind of the next level of additional preparation. Then you'll see the next level up from there is our insurance premium. We have for a significant number of years, I'm not sure if it was 30 or 40 years, I can't remember, we've had a, an insurance policy with Lloyds of London. Used to be a, about a million dollars a year for, I think it was $25 million in coverage. And we just never tapped into that. So personally, it's one of those things I used to question, why aren't we buying an insurance policy? Well, if you got into 2013 and 2014, those seasons that we had there, we blew through our funding and we got into that insurance fund. And so it's been historically very beneficial for the state of Oregon and Department of Forestry to have that insurance policy. However, after we broke the bank a couple of times with insurance policy in recent years, we've had to restructure that in order to still get insurance. And I don't want to bore you too much there, but you used to get into insurance policy much sooner. We had a $25 million deductible. And you'll see now that it's up around $50 million deductible before we can hit that insurance. And if you, I'll specifically speak to you, Mr. Commissioner Farr there. If you have more questions on this, we can get into details on it later if anybody else does. But I don't want to bore all of you too much here. But essentially, you know, if you look at those, the Oregon Forest Land Protection Fund and the General Fund, pay that first deductible there and then into that $30 million General Fund, landowners and residents and people paying minimum assessments, things of those nature, all contribute to that Oregon Forest Land Protection Fund. So that's kind of the basic structure. Again, it's, it's boring to a lot of people and it's, it takes a lot more time for me to get into any details. But that's an interesting slide for you to, to maybe take a look at to see how we manage, manage those extreme costs that we've had specifically these last few years.
Well, short on time, I have a single qualifying question. We pay, we, there's a $50 million deductible, which enables us to receive a $25 million insurance policy.
Yes.
That's a testimonial to the, the risk that we're at.
Yes. And it's, again, we used to have a much lower deductible for a larger insurance policy. But the, the state of Oregon right now, I believe we're about $70 million ahead of the insurance company right now. If you look at the past years that we've had that. And insurance companies aren't in the business of losing money. So we've had to try to, you know, it's an important facet of our funding and our protection, you know, for this. So we didn't want to lose it.
Thank you, Link.
And with that, I think we're at your 10 o'clock. So.
Couple of minutes, any quick questions for Greg or Link?
Just a process question. Are we going to come back on a consent agenda to do the appointment of the, the three members?
I thought under future business or down under Commissioner Business, we discussed the process of how to recommend three individuals to the board for approval.
Great. Thank you. Just want to clarify that. Thanks.
All right. I, I want to say thank you. Living in Cottage Grove, we had a few tense moments with that fire headed towards Cottage Grove and Crestwell. So, and I know most of the folks that live in that area that, you know, potentially were risking their homes. And I, I heard nothing but praises from individuals that lived near there and people that mobilized their equipment, you know, to really tackle that Chambers Fire. So I want to thank you for the great work that you do and, and protecting us because we needed you that day and you were there. So thank you.
Hopefully we're not going to have the same season every time. I get tired of this rain, I'll be honest with you. But it's been a certainly a welcome, welcome change from our past couple of winters. So.
I'm hoping that your chart that you showed us, that two or three days, or two or three years of kind of higher fire danger and then, I don't know, maybe close to 10 years of low, low activity. So maybe we're.
We're ready for that.
Head into the low activity for a few years or so.
Nice.
All right.
Remind me never to doubt the old farmer's almanac.
Yeah.
They nailed it.
Yeah.
They nailed exactly what's happening. That's surprising. So.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item 7C, which is the first public hearing in the formation of the Fern Ridge Community Policing District and related tax assessment to support operations of the proposed district. To welcome Mr. Kyler and Ms. Moody and turn it over to Mr. Kyler to kick us off.
Thank you. Chairman Stewart and members of the Board of County Commissioners, I'm Alex Kyler, the Intergovernmental Relations Manager for Lane County. We are, we thought we'd do just a quick staff briefing for you over on the packet before hearing from the public. And so the, the comments will generally, that will present generally be what's being proposed, where we are in the process, how will the district be paid for. We'll touch on a couple of future decision points and future steps that the process requires. So the short answer in terms of what is being proposed is a county service district is being proposed. A county service district is a wholly separate, it's a, it's essentially a new governmental entity governed by the Board of County Commissioners and it has taxing authority. The creation and dissolution of a county service district is outlined in both ORS 198 and ORS 451. And if you will recall, we've actually worked in these statutes in the past when we had to dissolve the, we had a wastewater service district that was initially created, I think, back in the 70s to pay for the facility out on River Avenue. And we worked with legislature back in, I think, '09 to make sure that we could dissolve that as it was no longer necessary. So instead of going to a vote of the public, we were able to dissolve it administratively. And I recall in working in those statutes then, how sort of confusing it is in terms of the interplay between the two statutes and the differences between a county service district and a special district. And so I'll just preface it by stating that, you know, it is, there is a lot of back and forth and the statutes in some cases are sort of imperfect, frankly. And so we've, we've worked pretty hard to make this as, as clear as possible for you. The other thing I wanted to suggest is in your, in your packet today, we did the memo that has quite a bit of information on the background on this. But we've also got some attachments. So you've got attachment A, which is, which is, you won't vote on today, but it does describe ultimately what the voter may see if you continue along this path, which is the ballot measure caption question and summary. The attachment B is the map of the Fern Ridge Community Policing District being proposed. Attachment C is an executive summary from a contractor who employed to do community research within the proposed district to try to get a sense of where voters potentially lie with respect to being in support or opposition of the proposal. Attachment D is the actual order that, that we are presenting to you today, which is sort of the next iteration of the order that you passed back on, on December 8th, which is what we refer to as the initiation order. So the statute sort of suggests that they're, in forming a district, the first step is that you initiate forming the district. The next steps are that you refine forming the districts. And that's where we are today is to sort of refine now and get in a little bit more detailed about what's being created. And we expect to hear from the public today and that will help inform the formation of the district. And then attachment E is the city of Vanita resolution. And that's required under law, it was required for Vanita to sort of accept the overlay of a district upon their municipal boundary. And it's our expectation that Vanita will have to continue to provide resolutions to make sure they agree with these refining steps that the board is being asked to, to take. So I want to go back to this attachment A, which is what the voters will see and sort of use that as a way to, to suggest, on May 17th, if you continue along this path, on May 17th, 2016, voters will, in that district, be asked to vote on the question of formation and the establishment of a permanent rate for the taxing district. But to get there, it sort of makes sense to back up and say, okay, how, what were the steps to get to that election language? And again, those steps are, under Oregon law, you have to initiate the formation of the district, which you did on December 8th. You then, there's some, there's actually some counts of days in between that initiation district and a public hearing that has to occur. And then another set of days get counted off under Oregon law and you'll have a second public hearing. So you're having your first public hearing today and your second public hearing on February 9th. And those, those have to be a certain number of days apart under Oregon law. And you do have the opportunity to, as I said, refine the order as you move through that process. The other things that are required is that eventually you'll have to have an order directing the clerk to place the language onto the May ballot. The clerk will then go through a five-day challenge to the ballot measure language. There has to be a voters pamphlet explanatory statement writing committee. Again, that's on your agenda for a little bit later today. There has to be a certification from the Department of Revenue on the boundary documents. So once you do make a step to place this onto the May ballot, or if you do that, then staff would send this legal description and the attached map up to DOR for their certification. And they have, they have under statute 30 days to review that document and make sure that it's okay with them. And then I already touched on the resolutions by Vanita that will accept the district overlay. And then there's some language in statute that speaks to properly noticing the actual meeting that we're having today. So prior to today's meeting, there were two ads in the, in the legal section of the register guard. And then we posted notices in the courthouse, in the Fern Ridge Library and in the Vanita City Hall about this, this meeting. And we'll have to do those kinds of notices again for the meeting on December 9th. So, excuse me, February 9th. So all this is to say that there's a lot of steps. And I think you've heard county councils speak to this before, that we've, we've worked very hard to try to sort of keep this moving because there is just, there are very little wiggle room. And we've had a lot of questions about how to interpret statute and how, who's gonna, who's going to be doing certain things. So it's been, it's been quite a bit of work to get to where we are today. So again, first public hearing today is after the initiation, initiation order. And if you refer to then that attachment, attachment D, we've already suggested a couple of changes in that order versus your initial order that you adopted on December 8th. So I want to speak to those for just a sec. One is, is that we met, after we did the survey in the community, we did meet with the proponents and spoke to the cost, which was initially, we thought the cost was going to be $1.80 per thousand. There was some concern in the community. We felt like that was one of the results of the survey about the cost. And the proponents did some discussing among themselves and changed the suite of services a little bit and brought that rate down to what is now being proposed as $1.67 per thousand. Those reduction in services include less focus on things that are not patrol-related. So essentially they kept the sheriff's patrol and halftime prosecutor and a school resource officer, but were, were made cuts in some of the other things that they had expected. A mental health ban, a, I think they call the community resource officer that they've also cut. And I think Christine can speak to a couple of the, the reductions that were made when we talk about the section and how it will be paid for. The other item that we brought into the order was, under state law, you can actually dissolve a permanent or a county service district at a set date in the future if you do so in the initiation order. So normally, a county service district can only be dissolved if, there's certain circumstances where you can dissolve a county service district. Typically involves a vote of the public. However, if you suggest in your formation that you're going to dissolve it prior to the 10th fiscal year from the date of today's order, is what we think the law requires, that you've, that you- that you've, that you have the ability then to automatically dissolve it, with the caveat that under, within Oregon law, you can have a hearing at that time, ten years in the future, where you can discuss the need for the continuation of the district. If you find in that public hearing that you want to continue, you certainly may continue, you however do not have the ability to change the permanent rate. So you can, you could, you could extend it for another ten years. And I think this becomes an important policy consideration for you today because, as Christine will outline, at a dollar sixty-seven, you get a sustainable budget for a period of time, but not twenty years. So if you want to dissolve, if you want to keep that dissolution, you perhaps might have to think about a different rate for the district. And I think this is, this is just sort of characteristic of creating a permanent taxing district. One of the things we see around the state is a number of permanent taxing districts have had to go out to the voters for local option levies. Because as much as they can try to make something sustainable over time, inevitably that tax rate just will not continue to support operations. And so the other tool then to that governmental entity is that they can go out to the voters' force for a local option. So you see a number of fire districts, a number of library districts, extension service districts, you know, all kinds of districts that will go, have a permanent, a permanent rate that supports them for a number of years. But ultimately, they seem to all have to rely on a local option at some point in their So the other, so in the board order that you have, at least the board order that you have in your packet, we did put the future dissolution into that order. The other thing we put into there is the direction to, direction to the administrator to forward the boundary to the Department of Revenue. And what is not in the order is, if you refer to the resolution that Vanita forwarded to you after their last, after the last order, they expressed some concern about making sure that the city of Vanita has some sort of role to play in the governance of the district. Now really, under Oregon law, the city of Vanita has, would have no authority in the governance of the district. That is, that is the job that falls to the Board of County Commissioners. They, in their resolution, they speak to a desire to have at least some sort of representation on the advisory committee, should you choose to create an advisory committee. We did not put any of that language into the board order. And so that's another item that I think you may want to contemplate today as you go through this, is to what degree would you like to place any sort of language into the initiation and the formation board orders? The option is, is that we could also put that language into the order that will be required to send this down to the clerk's office. And if you recall, when you did the jail levy, there was a lot of specificity in that board order that went to the clerk. So that was where you put the formation of an advisory committee, the annual audit. You put a lot of that language into your board order. I think the, the challenge here is, is that, you know, Vanita has this other step that they need to, they, they have the ability to say, well, we, this thing does not go forward unless these resolutions continue to come from Vanita supporting what you've done. And so you've got some of this tension about what you're signaling to the city of Vanita by either placing something into this order or not. Okay? So I think that's, the only other item I was going to bring up was that after this meeting, after this particular item, you will speak about the explanatory statement committee. We had a nice conversation earlier today, a little bit about the one for the levy. Same dynamic exists for this, and it's just sort of a concurrent piece with the, with the development of placing something onto the ballot. So with that, I ask Christine to come down to talk a little bit about how the district will be taken.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Stewart, Commissioners. I think you've heard some details. I'll just cover the services that are currently in the budget and then the piece about two different rates that are also mentioned in your memo. So the services that were originally proposed back when the rate was a dollar eighty were to have the twenty-four hour patrol, which consists of ten sheriff deputies and a sergeant, to have a district attorney, some contracting for some jail beds and a cahoots van, mental health services, as we mentioned, and then also a school resource officer. So the things that have been taken out since that first conversation are elimination of the mental health support, the cahoots van, a reduction in the district attorney time that would be spent from a full-time down to a half-time, but still keeping the twenty-four hour patrol, the school resource officer. So those are the changes that we've seen. The budget, as mentioned, when we're looking at a more fixed time period, when we're talking about the ten-year and the possibility of dissolving the district, we can then focus on a slower ramp up in the beginning of the services. So you're saving more in the beginning of this levy and then spending it as the ten years goes on. That is why it's not sustainable in the long term. So at a dollar sixty-seven, based on projections of what we think property tax growth will be and the expenses, it will be affordable for the ten-year period. Beyond that, the rate would need to be closer in the one seventy range, so just a few cents more per thousand would get you more sustainability out past the ten years. So it's that conversation about where, where you want to think about that ten-year process now. I will also note that this district will have its own budget committee. So when we're talking about advisory committee, there would be the other legal required budget committee, that would be the Board of Commissioners and other members of that district. So that would be who would be approving this budget and then the board ultimately. So if there are any questions on the budget specifically?
Mrs. Thorson?
On the budget committee, is the budget committee of the Lane County Budget Committee or is it a separate budget committee for the district?
Completely separate. It's a different governing body.
So it's the same directors, same commissioners?
Right.
But it's a different budget committee, and the commissioners are part of that budget So, and there's five citizen members from the district?
Correct.
That are on the budget committee with the five commissioners to make sure the money is spent in accordance with the policies?
Correct.
Okay. And you're pointing out that we then would have to appoint five residents of the district, not necessarily of the district or of the district?
Yes, they need to be of the district.
Of the district.
Right.
So they, the five residents will be appointed from the district to be the public members of the ten-member budget committee?
Right.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Other questions? All right. Okay. The other item that I just wanted to cover was that you do have some decision points here as, as we've outlined, and I just wanted to identify a couple of resources. Obviously, you're going to hear from the public today about their thoughts, and this may bring to light some additional options that we had not considered that need to be or could be in the order. The other resource you have is your ten-year public safety plan and then the survey of the community. And that survey, what we found was initially, there were more folks who liked the idea than didn't like the idea, but that never, that, that number never did get above fifty percent in terms of supporters. And then by the end of the survey, after they'd heard arguments for and against it, that number sort of flipped where you actually had fewer people who supported and more people who opposed. So ultimately, at least the survey showed forty-three percent support for the formation of the district. So I would say that proponents have, you know, a challenge on their hand in order to, to bring supporters to this. And again, it's a, it's a confusing kind of structure, and it was just a survey of voters who probably hadn't heard, in most cases had not heard anything about it to date. And so I just suggest you take that survey with a grain of salt. Obviously, we had in our, right, in my experience here, we had one survey that we did spot-on before the jail levy and then another survey that was wildly off when we went to the voters for the vehicle registration fee. So I think some of you have had experience with, with polling and know sort of what, what to expect with respect to polling. And then finally, your future steps. You do have a meeting on February ninth, which is the scheduled for, to take place at six P M. in Elmira. So you're, you've made a commitment to go out and speak to the, hear from the voters in that area, the residents in that area. We do need to ensure that we have a quorum for that meeting so that you can actually pass, there is going to be two orders if, if you advance the issue today, there will be two orders at that meeting. One to sort of finalize the formation and one to then direct the clerk to take the steps necessary to put the thing onto the May ballot. And so we will continue to, need to ensure that there's actually a quorum present at that meeting. And then the other item is, how will you either campaign for or against this, and that's really the question of the Board of Commissioners, once, once you make a decision to place something on the ballot, staff have very little ability to be involved as a, as either a proponent or an opponent. We've got to remain strictly factual at that point. That provision under Oregon law does not apply to elected officials who may go out in the community and speak in favor of the measure. So I just wanted to bring that last piece to your attention, and I think you've covered it.
I would say that it has been, really, we have gone very quickly. You know, I know I've said this, oh, sorry. I know I've said this before, talking to my colleagues around the state, this is typically a two- or three-year process, not October to May, less than a year or so. But I think Mr. Kyler and Ms. Moody have covered it pretty well. I would say it is, the February ninth and making sure we have a quorum is critical just because of the other timelines that fall into place in terms of making sure we get things on the ballot.
Your February ninth meeting is your last meeting in, in February. So what we talked about, I think, very early on was this date of February twenty-sixth, of the date the clerk has to forward everything up to the Secretary of State's office. And so if we can't do something on February ninth, then it will require an emergency meeting or some other manner to get the board together. Okay? Any questions or comments before we, Mr. Bozovic?
Thank you. First, I want to thank staff for looking into an alternative location for the second hearing out in the district. That was a request of mine to look for that, and we did, were unfortunately not able to use any of the school facilities during that time period because they're all booked that night. And, and I wish we could have had this hearing out in the district, but we were up against the thirty-day notice and being able to find a facility. So I really appreciate staff's work in getting, finding a facility and scheduling something out in the district for the second hearing. I'll probably get back to this later, but I think it's very important that we put the language around the advisory committee into the board order. You know, I've been attending the city of Vanita's meetings. They are expecting us to have that in this board order, and they will, and they're expecting to co-adopt this second board order at a subsequent city council meeting prior to our February ninth hearing. So if it's not in there, I think we are going to be kind of getting out of sync with the city of Vanita and their expectations. They're not asking to be the governing body or beyond the governing body, they're just asking for a voice in the advisory committee that is advisory to the commissioners that are the actual governing body. So I, I think adding the language about the advisory committee back into the board order is appropriate, and if we have to have staff bring the board order back to us in this afternoon session to have time to draft that language and look over the legalities of it, I think that's a very important issue for us. Including some, you know, language around the advisory committee having some ability to have input on hiring, although they don't have control over hiring. It's obviously clear, but those were the two things that the city of Vanita was very concerned about, was having, having a certain amount of input on the advisory committee, that we appoint an advisory committee, and I think we can pretty clearly commit to that, you know, that we'd like to see citizens from within the district recommending to us, you know, how this, how this plays out. And the city of Vanita being about thirty-five percent of that district's population, that they should have some voice on that committee. Not necessarily a majority voice, but at least a voice. I'd also like to, as we move forward and we hear from the public, the difference between having the dissolution date at five years out versus ten years out. I know ten years is kind of the furthest out we can have it by law. That's the maximum we can push that date out. I think as we look at the survey information, one of the concerns that moved people towards no was the idea that this was going to be forever. And most people in Oregon are used to looking at a five-year serial levy. And if we put the dissolution date at five years to where we look at this thing, determine if there's still public need and can move on from there, it may, it matches it up more to what the voters expect in, in seeing things looked at in five years rather than ten years down the road. But I'd like to kind of hear somewhat as, as folks are testifying how they feel about that. I will note that the survey, and at least the, the register guard's summary of it seemed pessimistic. I think though, if you look at what the folks changed in the proposal, it's not as bad as, as it sounds because the changes they made, when you looked at what moved people positively and negatively, the two things that moved people to a sixty percent support were the twenty-four hour patrol portion and the school resource officer, and those were kept in. The things that tended to move people negative and confuse people was the local jail beds because they didn't understand the difference between the jail beds for violent criminals provided under our levy and the local jail beds being rented by jurisdictions like the city of Eugene or even the city of Springfield for females that are holding lesser people. And that confusion about that actually drove some of the movement towards a no vote. So by pulling some of those things out and concentrating on the things that had support, you're actually moving towards what, you know, if you look at the, the follow-up questions, had sixty percent support. So I don't think the, the news is as dire as presented in the register guard summary of the survey, particularly when you look at what they chose to change in the proposal. So as we move forward, after we hear from the public, we can have a little bit more conversation about the board order amendments and maybe coming back this afternoon to add in the advisory committee pieces. Also, whether we want to do a five or a ten-year dissolution date. But I, I think with those two things, I'm looking forward to hearing from the public. I am going to excuse myself for about five minutes. I was traveling all weekend and eating in restaurants all weekend, and I'm sorry, but I have to leave for five minutes. So please excuse me, and I ask the, the excuse of the board.
Chris Thorson?
I just wanted to ask a little bit about the public hearing that would be scheduled within the, do we say policing district? Is that the right term? Policing district? Within the policing district, proposed policing district. The hearing would be February nine in the evening at Deep Woods. This has come up before in the past where we've tried to hold public meetings at private facilities that aren't used to holding public meetings and the question of accessibility of the site. And I looked at their website, Deep Woods, I looked at their website, and there's no mention of ramps or accessibility or anything like that, or, there, there's quite a bit, of course, on, on weddings, so I suspect there's microphones and ability to hear. That doesn't seem to be a problem. Plenty of tables, plenty of space, none of that seems to be a problem. What about the accessibility? What about the accessibility?
Chairman Stewart and Commissioner Swanson, I'm not sure. I'll have to get back to you on that. I didn't make those arrangements. I do know that, I think I saw that we did make an arrangement to have Metro TV there so we can at least make sure that we've got the
Recording.
The recording and, but I will, I will get back to you on accessibility and I think I can do that fairly quickly.
Anything else?
Is, do you think that will be a problem or do we just not know?
Given the attention to detail of the staff that had made those arrangements, Commissioner Swanson, Chairman Stewart, I think that's probably been covered. I think they probably took that into consideration, but I don't know for sure. So, I will get back to you certainly today with an answer to that question or at least let the administrator know if I'm not down here.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lichen?
Commissioner Chair. Alex, any idea of how many other special districts have built in the dissolution language into them? Do we have any idea if that's built in into any other special districts around the state? Because I know that this is offered, but that's my question, is this language built in in other districts around the state? I don't think it's built in in Willamalee, that's why it's still around after 50 years.
Commissioner Stewart and Commissioner Lichen, I don't know the exact answer to that. I, the comments that I'd received to date sort of were same sort of thing, that people weren't aware necessarily that that option actually existed in state law. Clearly, somebody liked the ideas, they made it into statute, but I don't, I am not aware of ones that have been formed with that dissolution date. I think the rationale for it is that, you know, there, sometimes these districts are formed to perform a specific function that will then no longer be required. And I think probably a good example is the wastewater service district that the county formed was created for the provision of providing sort of a fiscal agent for the development of that facility, knowing that eventually it would be turned over, or at least it was eventually turned over to more of an intergovernmental agreement that ran it. And so, it's my assumption that as districts evolved under Oregon law, that people who had had this experience sort of wanted that option. But I am, yeah, I don't, Willamalee is a good example. I think they have, they were created in perpetuity. They're one of these districts though, that with a permanent rate and just recently passed a local option levy to support more of their work.
Commissioner Lichen, I think that that's correct. And you'll recall, until, before this language was available, it could be very cumbersome and expensive to dissolve one of these. And I think that was the reason that this was put in, was to simplify it for those purposes that had a specific function and time. So, I suspect the more, the newer the district and the more specific the purpose, probably the more common the sunset.
Well, in a sense, a local option levy also has a dissolution every five years. And either the voters get to say, yes, we like it, we'll renew it, or no, goodbye. And so, I think it's a good tool personally. And I'm not sure, I heard Commissioner Bozovich suggested maybe five-year. You know, I'm open to actually, you know, having that discussion, but I think, I mean, that's basically what we do with local option levies, is five years. This is actually creating a special, a policing district, which in a sense is just, it's a little bit different animal than a local option levy. So, I'll look forward to that conversation with the board as well. I like the idea of having that built in, whether it's used or not. I think that makes sense because in a sense, you're creating a sunset. And I will look back on the vehicle registration fee as probably one of the biggest mistakes we made was not building a sunset in it too. So, anyway, that's, so I appreciate, it's a good tool to have.
Commissioner Stewart and Commissioner Lichen, I think the other, you know, to build on your discussion, one of the things that we talked about and the board has talked about was the idea that other communities may see this as a model and eventually have a way for the county to participate in, if there were enough of these models, to actually create a larger district that would, you know, encompass more geographical area. I think the dissolution date is sort of functional in that conversation as well because one of the things that made me a little nervous about that conversation was, yeah, you've got to dissolve anything that you create and sort of aligning the stars to make them dissolve at a, you know. So, this is another functionality of that future dissolution is if, if these conversations actually bear fruit, there is a way that the board could then be, ensure that a community conversation could occur to potentially establish a larger, if not county-wide, service district.
Of course, the federal government was, I'll censor my language, doing their job. We'll leave it at that and we wouldn't be having this discussion. So, anyway, it's too bad that we're even having to have this conversation about creating models for other areas within our own county. And I'll just bring that up yet once again, but it seems to go on deaf ears. So, but appreciate, thank you for the information, appreciate it.
And Commissioner Stewart and Commissioner Swanson, we did hear back from Dana Jones. The Deep Woods is fully ADA accessible.
Okay. Hey, Commissioner Park.
Thank you, Commissioner Stewart. You know, whether or not other districts have done it before, it seems prudent that we would include a dissolution date. And five years seems appropriate to me based upon other precedents regarding local option levies. People are accustomed to that. And Alex, I like what you stated about potentially looking at a different district boundary at that point in time. And Ms. Moody, you talked about the front, backloading the spending, so spending less upfront, that would create a little bit less of a curve as far as the uniformity of the spending throughout the term of the district's life, so to speak, or its temporary life. A question, and I'm anxious to hear a public testimony on this, so I don't, I'm not going to belabor you with a lot of questions right now. Just one question regarding Deep Woods. My first grandson is due to be born about that day, so just wanted to make certain that I'll be able to access via telephone that day in order to complete the quorum.
Thank you. Commissioner Swanson?
Regarding the issue of whether or not districts should get a sunset date, we went through quite a long process on that, you know, on that Eugene-Springfield district that we had. It just seemed like it went on forever as far as this district was created and now how are we going to, now that its purpose has been fulfilled, how are we going to keep it going? I mean, it's possible that, that something in the five-year period will change and that there won't be a need for the district. That's possible. It's possible that the voters might want to put a special option on top of their current level of taxation that's built into the base, whatever that turns out to be. Because I noticed we are jettisoning some of the things that have been discussed this district might be doing, even changing the name from a broader public safety district to a policing district. And just to be clear, I'm for anything that will help the citizens get something more than they currently have. And I think building in a date like the end of the district is prudent. I'm not sure about the five years. Five years is something that is built into the local option and I'm concerned about an overlap, if there was a need for an overlap, namely that the district, that the level of taxation could be lowered. And as I understand, we couldn't lower the level of taxation, but maybe we can. Is that a maximum? In terms of the base, that's a maximum?
Yes, Commissioner Swanson, Chair Stewart, you can always assess less than your permanent rate.
So, if during the five-year period, if we chose a five-year sunset, the budget committee of the district wanted to put a lower amount of taxes to achieve the goal of maintaining public support for the district, if that's the testimony that we received, if that was the decision we wanted to come to, that would be available to reduce the level of taxation and reduce the level of services. Okay. All right.
Other questions?
Okay. So, we have a public hearing scheduled. We have heard from staff and commissioners on several items that hopefully folks' testimony can touch on, rate, dissolution, advisory committee and anything else. I'm not trying to tell you what to comment on, but it would be nice to, if you have a recommendation on those items, to please provide it. Will, I'll call your name. Please come to the podium, state your name for the record and area of residence, Vanita or Elmira or Alvedore, wherever it is. And I'll start a timer and give you three minutes to speak. So, the first person is David Valbrecht.
Good morning. My name is David Valbrecht and I'd like to speak in favor of this community policing district, tell a story about my experience in the county and police response, sheriff's response. I'm a retired private investigator. Couple of months ago, we were, my wife and I were looking out our back window and saw a man breaking into the house. We didn't know those neighbors, but normally people don't enter their house through a back window. So, my wife started over there and I picked up my handgun. And by the time I got over there, a man was leading a young lady back toward the house, holding her by her arm. And they went in the house, so I thought everything was okay. And I started to leave when a cab driver pulled up. Excuse me. He told me that he was in fear for the woman's safety, that he had picked the gentleman up at the airport and delivered him to that address. And in that drive, explained that he loved her and nobody wanted her, wanted him around her and that he was concerned that he was going to do something to harm the woman. Anyway, I went up to the door, knocked on the door. No one answered, so I opened the door and looked at him and he had the woman by, with both hands, holding her. And I said, I think it's time that you came out outside. And he said, no. So, I pulled the gun out of my pocket and told him to come out to the curb. He sat down, everything was fine at that point, put the gun away and made a call to 911 asking for the sheriff. It, response time was about 20 or 30 minutes. And I, in spite of the fact that I heard that the officers have to wait for backup when there's a gun involved, an officer did show up, you know, during that period of time. It took probably another 20 to 30 minutes to get that, a second car on scene. This happened during the day when there was coverage in the district, in the city. But one could only guess how long it would take to get a sheriff on scene between the black hours of 2:00 in the morning and 6:00, whatever they are. It, you never know how badly you need an officer until you don't have one. And I'm trying to press upon people in the city and in this new district that once they have it, they'll appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Becky Limler.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Becky Limler and I live in Elmira. I'm here to address the proposed Fernridge Community Policing District. I did a check of registered voters in the affected area and 65% of the voters in this proposed district live within Vanita. I learned in the town hall meetings and as stated in the Vanita City Newsletter that this proposal will be a tax-neutral expense for Vanita taxpayers while receiving enhanced services. Based on the tax-assessed value of my property, an additional $600 per year will be added to my tax burden, and that's just the first year. Since I don't live in Vanita, my home won't be worth any, my vote won't be worth anything because only 25% to 30% of the voters live outside of the Vanita area. This proposal, I feel, is unjust, unfair and unaffordable. Commissioners, please do not force me and my neighbors out of our homes by allowing this proposal to be placed on the ballot. I would also like to comment on the public hearing, which was discussed earlier in this meeting today. That was the first I had heard of that public meeting. It is not being widely notified of when these meetings are being held or where they're being held or what time they're being held, making it very difficult for those affected by this proposed district to have their voice heard. I would also add that anyone writing an explanation of this proposal needs to be living in the district it affects. And lastly, people at the town halls have voiced concerns about how this is being rushed through at such a fast pace. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ted Fox.
My name is Ted Fox and I'm a property owner. I own 42 acres at Yimple Hill Road and Pine Grove Road in the unincorporated area of Lane County. I was asked whether I was pro or con for this initiative when I signed in today. And I guess I'm a skeptic about this whole thing. I attended one of the Elmira meetings and I have grave doubts, as this last speaker said, my parcel of land, which I pay a heck of a lot of property taxes for, would go up $900 for my one 42-acre parcel. I'm asking the question, why, who draws the boundaries, number one? Why across the street, apparently, on Pine Grove Road, my neighbor would not be in this district, I would be assessed another almost $1,000 a year to pay for policing? What happens if she has an armed intruder at her house? She calls 911. Do they look it up and say, oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Moran, we can't come to your address because you're outside of the special policing district? That's absurd. My question to you Commissioners is why isn't this a county-wide initiative? Why are you picking on a specific area around Fernridge Reservoir? Why am I being included in this district, which seems to be pushed more or less by the people in Vanita to reduce their rates of taxation? We're all for policing, don't get me wrong. What we find effective in the area that I live in is that we network with neighbors. When there's an armed intruder, that gets around pretty quick and phone calls are made. People are armed, of course, and that is how we address an issue. I was out herding one of my cows that got out on the road the other night. A pickup truck came by and said, hey, by the way, keep your eye open for an older version Nissan car because we saw him casing a couple houses in our neighborhood. And that's how it's done where I live. We're not inside the Vanita district, we're out in the rural area. The other thing that I object to too, is I proposed at one of these meetings in Elmira that we have a parcel tax. To me, that would be much more equitable than policing or taxing based on what our county tax bills are. I call the 911, is it any different than somebody in Vanita in a $100,000 trailer park? The call goes the same. I'm paying $900 a year. This person in Vanita may be paying $50 or $100 a year. I mean, services are services. I don't understand at all how this district has come about so quickly, why there's a need for it right now. And I certainly object to this additional taxation that seems to be rushed through and being imposed upon me as an owner. By the way, our family trust owns property on the other side of Pine Grove need for it right now, and I certainly object to this additional taxation that seems to be, uh, rushed through and being imposed upon me as an owner. By the way, our family trust owns property on the other side of Pine Grove Road, which is not in the district. What happens to that property? The other thing that never was explained at the Elmira meeting, I might be running out of time, but what happens to the businesses? Are they taxed? Or is this only residential property that's taxed? That's never been explained. So I've got grave concerns about all of these issues, and I certainly would endorse this five-year sunset at the very minimum. Having a permanent tax is, is absolutely absurd in my mind.
Thank you. Next, I believe it's Steven, is it Parrick?
Uh, my name is Steven Parrick. I live in Alvidore. Uh, I wasn't originally going to speak, but I changed my mind as I was sitting here today. Um, as of right now, I'm leaning against the measure, um, but I can't make up my mind until I have more information. And one of my concerns is that the information about the specific details of this project haven't been explained fully. My initial assessment seems to be this is a policing district for Veneta. Uh, I made that initial assessment when I was reading the registered guard article, which is one of the first things that brought my attention to this, and as I did more research, I was concerned that the people of Alvidore are being lumped into this for, uh, I guess our funding dollars, uh, and not so much because we'd be receiving a direct benefit. One example of that is the Bethel School District where I live in. One of the, the components of this funding measure is a school resource officer for, uh, something that doesn't directly benefit my household. Um, I'd also like to say, I don't know where officers are going to be stationed, how patrols are going to be happening, and if this is any different than what currently exists. Uh, I don't exactly feel unsafe in my area right now, and I may be, uh, in the minority, but I agree with one of the previous commenters that, uh, in Alvidore, I feel tremendous sense of community. And, um, while I haven't lived there very long, I haven't heard of specific examples of why I should feel unsafe in my community. I'm fortunate enough to have a fire station just right around the corner, and I think that response times for that ambulance and, and fire would be quick. In fact, we had a, a fire set in our neighbor's backyard, uh, over this last summer, and response was within a couple of minutes. Uh, but I haven't felt the need to have a police force really close by, and I'm not sure that response times will change. Uh, this will impact my household by $800 a year. And, uh, again, that's a steep price to pay, and I'd be curious to know why the Commissioners feel that this is something that's important for the people of Alvidore, uh, and how it will benefit the people of Alvidore. Uh, I was happy to hear about the position of potential dissolution in five years, and my recommendation would be for me to even consider this proposal. I'd like to see a five-year dissolution with an option to renew by the voters, uh, and not exclusively by the council. I think that would probably be the only thing, along with additional information, that would allow me and my household to consider voting for this proposal. Uh, in conclusion, I feel this is a policing district for Veneta and the people of Veneta. I don't have enough information and I don't feel entirely unsafe in my household, and for that reason, our current position is to vote against this proposal. Thank you.
Thanks. Next, Judy Templeton.
My name is Judy Templeton. I'm a rural Elmira resident. However, I also have property in other districts. Uh, in fact, just my home site. The consequences of this, uh, proposal are, uh, notable to my pocketbook. Uh, I find that, uh, I don't live in a $150,000 house, which is usually what is presented in the news media. Uh, the consequences of this would probably reach $600 to $800 on my home site, property. Uh, that, for the level of protection that I would gain, I think is excessive. I don't see that this, in my future, would be of great benefit or what I, services I presently have. I've been to some of the public meetings, two of them. I've read the media. I've read your proposal today. Every time I go to a meeting, the ballpark changes. I see flashing red lights, as far as you're concerned. I don't think this is a mature proposal, it's been on a fast track. I particularly, uh, even with the five-year sunset, question that because the word "permanent" appears regularly in the discussions and in the text. Permanent, to me, means another thing. I've asked and inquired of other property owners in the state of Oregon. We're a timber tax county. I ask in Washington County, "How are you taxed in rural areas?" Oh, we have three levels of taxation for policing districts. We have the city of Viberkin, we have these other little cities that are incorporated that have their own police department, and we have rural areas. So I think probably we need an expanded consideration of what this little proposal does for us. The district boundaries here are proposed on the, uh, well, it appears to be a school district. So I inquired of another school district, Junction City. "How are you financing the school resource officer?" "Oh, that comes out of the school budget." Maybe a little bit for police protection, but it comes out of the school budget. Triangle Lake borders us. "Oh, we can't afford the sheriff, that'd cost $175,000 for a school resource officer. We'll go our own, put it in the school budget, charter school." "Well, how many kids in Elmira go to Elmira schools? We have parochial schools, we have charter schools, we have two school buses that exit from Elmira." So we really aren't covering the school district, are we? Well, there's other flaws here. I don't really like the advisory committee. I don't like, uh, the term, um, let's see, we have now a budget committee. Is it a budget committee or an advisory committee? Is it loaded with city of Veneta, with the city, uh, of Veneta only? No, it has the school district maybe in some of these public meetings. Well, it's all confusing. I think we better start, stop and really take a, a look at this beast.
Thank you. Next is David Quirk.
Uh, my name is Dave Quirk. I live in unincorporated Veneta, outside city limits. Um, a little bit of background about myself, I'm currently the patrol captain for the Fernridge Crime Rock, Crime Watch group. I have about five or six individuals that, uh, on their own time volunteer, uh, to patrol the areas within the Veneta city limits themselves. How I first got involved in Crime Watch, um, I saw that the meeting was being held, uh, at the library in Veneta. And, uh, 22 years in the Navy, I understand that when you saturate a certain area, um, with policing or anything else, the criminal element tends to move away from that area and outside. Uh, so I wanted to get involved, uh, to see what the decisions were going to be made. And, and I understand, uh, people that, uh, you know, I'm, I'm looking at this from a community standpoint, it's not about me. I mean, I'm outside, I don't pay the taxes for Veneta right now, uh, but, uh, it's not about me, it's about the community. Because if we stick this directly within Veneta itself, uh, the criminal element stays outside the borders. And they come into Veneta, they commit the crimes, and they go back outside. None of these people here that have talked have been in a vehicle at two o'clock, three o'clock, four o'clock in the morning, seeing the amount of people out within the city limits themselves. We don't have police coverage. We have daytime, people are walking into, uh, yards, um, looking through fence posts. Um, I just don't, until someone can actually pick up a time and, and spend time out in the field with us, to understand that there is criminal element in this area. We need to have some sort of representation to end this. And five years from now, granted, I don't think this is gonna end. It's not a sunset clause, I believe, it's to be reviewed after five years. But as we all know, even buildings, when they're built near the seashore, if we don't maintain them, the salt water eventually erodes them and they fall down. If we take this out in five years, criminal element more than likely will come back. This is something that needs to be done. As far as expediency, why do we have to wait two to three years to put this together? The criminal element's not gonna stop. I think this is, this is, should be applauded to get this done so quickly. It's to get, the sooner we can get this started, the sooner we can dedicate police activity against the criminal element in this area. And everybody else's property values will go up because people want to move out to Veneta in those areas because it's safe. The schools are safe, we have resource officers, we have everything in place, it's a full system. You can't just put police on station, arrest people and have them back on the streets in 24 hours. And I see them. I see them arrested and I see them on the streets the next morning at two in the morning, walking the streets. That's not effective. It's just not effective. So I apologize for not having a prepared speech, but, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Iris, is it Quitta?
Yes, hi, I'm Iris Quitta. I do live in Veneta, um, relatively new to the area, and I'm a strong proponent of this. In fact, I'm a little disappointed that the proposal has been scaled back. I understand the reason, I understand that you need to start small and grow. Um, I agree with what Dave was just saying, that it's an ecosystem, and policing is important. I do believe it affects quality of life. I'm personally concerned about people having the mentality that they're going to self-protect. I think that, as the community grows, can become dangerous and can have negative, um, effects. I, I'm also in the insurance business, and it's the kind, it's the same kind of thing. You don't need it, you don't think it's necessary until you need it. And I feel the same way about policing. You don't think it's necessary until you need it. I hear folks say there's no crime, I hear other folks say that the criminals are apprehended and then let go the next day, and the revolving door is of great concern to me, and I don't think this problem is gonna self-correct. So as citizens, we should take action to maintain a level of civility. As the communities grow, I think the communities will be safer, and, um, so I hope you consider it possible.
Thank you. Uh, next is Steve Reiser.
I wanted to address a couple of things. The first thing I wanted to address for those listening is, why the fast pace? Why are we moving so quickly? Well, because we've been put there. All of you are now addressing this next year's budgets. We all know about cuts. We all know that we've been absorbing cuts and we're gonna continue to absorb cuts, and we also know that there are no solutions to some of the problems that we face. We understand, as a group, that the sheriff's office will carry a percentage of the cuts that you pass down. There's not much wiggle room for the sheriff. Where can he cut? He's mandated to maintain that jail. He's mandated to maintain search and rescue, process serving, dispatch. And the only area that the sheriff has the ability to cut when handed budget cuts is the policing division. It is why we do not have 24-hour coverage in Lane County. It is why we've gone from some 150-some deputies patrolling our county, the size of Connecticut, to a mere 28. When you hand down next year's cuts, the sheriff will be once again tasked to look at, "Where can I trim?" We're in a place right now where, we're already at 20 hours. We're already, in most cases, one deputy out there by himself. We know the one deputy isn't adequate to give an appropriate response. We've heard the fire chief of Lane Rural Fire Authority say they have to sit, stage down the road, wait for deputy to be on scene first, requirement. We've heard in the case where a deadly weapon is involved, where two deputies are required to respond. You can't, you can't keep managing where we're managing. So what if we do nothing? What are we going to do if we do no, if, let's say we, you move, you don't move forward with this district? What are you gonna do? There is no other option. We've been listening. We've heard. We're doing everything we can as proponents of this plan to make sure that we're addressing the affordability, to make sure that we're addressing what people view as priorities. Respective of the dissolution, we've been working with county managers, five years, 10 years, we're in favor. We don't, we're not taking a position. We're saying, if that's what people are saying that they want to have, fine. With respect to cahoots and youth corps, our group looked at that as, is there something in our plan where we can reduce the cost and yet keep the elements alive? Those were two areas where we felt we could address that with grant funding or perhaps public fund, or private funding sources. It isn't that we want those things to go away, it's that we felt like there's a, there's a way to keep the plan holistic without killing them altogether. Um, I'll answer any questions that, any, any of you have, and any questions that anybody else has. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, Steve was the last one that signed up. Is there anyone that would like to, that didn't sign up that'd like to speak? Okay. Steve, then I will, uh, close the public hearing and, um, look back to staff or my colleagues. I know we've, um, had some input on several of the questions staff asked us and Commissioner Bozovic had, uh, stated. And also, um, the discussion about the, um, potential next public hearing on the, uh, night. Wish you're liking.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I want to say thank you to the folks who took the time to be here this morning to testify on the public hearing, I really, really do appreciate it. Uh, I think this would be very helpful because there was a couple of folks who testified this morning, and maybe, Alex, if you could maybe give a brief synopsis, I think, at best here, because, uh, one gentleman suggested why was wiseness created countywide? And if you wouldn't mind maybe touching on the fact that the, in order for service delivery to happen on a, to create a county-wide district, because this, we talked about this about a decade ago, we're governed by the metro plan. And in order for that to be created, well, it would have to happen Eugene, Springfield, Lane County would all have to vote in the affirmative. And if memory serves me correct, a decade ago, um, Springfield, Lane County voted in the affirmative, Eugene voted no, that killed it, conversation over with. And I, I think that's important to note. Uh, the other piece is that this is not driven by Lane County. I live in Springfield. In fact, 65% of all the population in Lane County live in either Eugene or Springfield. I have 24/7 patrol, I have 24/7 fire and life safety, I have an 100-bed municipal jail. I'm in, live, live in a pretty safe neighborhood in, in Thurston. I don't need this. This is dri, this is driven by citizens who came to Lane County. This isn't Lane County Board of Commissioners. This is a group of citizens that came to us. I think that's key here. And, uh, so, but the other piece is that, I mean, if you wanted us to take a look at a countywide again, we could, but this is gonna take a long time in order to get Eugene, Springfield, Lane County, all to vote in the affirmative until the day the metro plan is done, done away with. Well, we've been talking about this for years, and guess what? The metro plan is still here. We've been doing our darndest to kind of do some things with it to see if there's ways that we can exercise ourselves out of it, and it's very complicated. And thanks to the mental giants who created this, you know, some 30, 40 years ago, maybe they thought it was a great thing then, but it sure doesn't do well in delivering services today. But, uh, I explained that. I don't know, Alex, if you, if you wanna, you know, if you have any more you'd like to add to that, but, uh, Commissioner Stewart and Commissioner Sorensen were on this board when that public safety district was looked at and was, it was a, if memory serves me correct, we announced vote by Lane County. And the Springfield City Council, I think we had one no vote, and he's still on the council today, if memory serves me correct. But other than that, it was the city of Eugene that voted no, and that killed a public safety special district back a decade ago, thing?
Yeah, close to 10 years ago, yes.
Yeah, close to 10 years ago, yes.
Commissioner Stewart, Chairman Stewart and Commissioner Lichen, I think the only piece I would, just for folks here and listening, understand is that, under state law, we did, we spoke a little bit earlier about the need for the city of Veneta to pass a resolution in support of this formation order. And what you're describing is sort of even additional layer on top of that. So because of the way the, the organizations of Eugene, Springfield, and Lane County organize themselves under the metro plan, that was some language that was specific to the metro plan about, essentially, that was one of the issues that, that the cities have struggled with, is that it allowed for one entity to sort of have veto power over all three. And so, in the metro plan guidance, it spoke to them halting to approve of any district formation. And you're absolutely right. What occurred was sort of a, the death of the work that had been undertaken by the county to form a district as a result of one, one of those partners voting against it. I was given two folders that make up a stack about a foot high that addressed that whole period of time by the outgoing planning director from Lane County, in case it ever did come up. And I think it is a topic of ongoing metro plan reformation conversations. But nonetheless, you're absolutely right. There is a requirement that cities approve of a district formation, and that's why we have had this sort of ongoing dialogue with the city of Veneta through their city council.
So I think the folks better be happy that Eugene is not involved in this, or even Springfield, for that matter, is not involved in this, to vote on it. And in fact, I would suggest right now, it may be a challenging vote in the city of Springfield after the 100-bed municipal jail was built. I'm not sure that even the city of Springfield would go down that road as far as a special district. Now, I haven't spoken to the mayor about this. I haven't spoke to the city councilors, but just based on just that overall conversation, that's, that's what I, what I believe is the case. But thank you for the information. I hope that answers a little bit of question that, from a couple of folks who spoke, that this is a citizen-driven initiative. And I, and I think it's our responsibility to at least listen to the comments and be, and before moving forward. And so, that's, that's really our duties as a commissioner. But it's not our initiative as the Board of Commissioners. And hopefully that answers a couple of things here. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks.
Commissioner Sorenson?
So, we had some testimony that this would cost, I think one was like $900. What is the dollar per thousand amount in the proposal as it currently stands?
Dollar sixty-seven.
Dollar sixty-seven?
Yeah.
How much, what would your real property valuation have to be for, to have to pay $900 at a dollar sixty-seven?
For $50,000.
Is there a way to, or maybe?
Well, Commissioners Stewart, Chairman Stewart, Commissioner Sorenson, I think the paper today used a figure of, of a value, a home valued at $200,000 would pay, I believe they had written $330 a year.
$330?
Yeah.
So would that mean that the house or property value would have to be three times that?
That's the way I understand it.
So they would have a valuation of approximately, well, she can't do it. She can't do it under the gun.
No, I can't.
Oh, you can't?
She's telling me it would be about $500 to $600,000.
Assessed value.
$500 to $600,000 in assessed value?
Correct.
To produce $900?
$900,000, that's right.
Okay. Are there a lot of properties that are that, at that high, at that value?
Chairman Stewart, Commissioner Sorenson, when I inquired about the average home value within the district at the time that we were looking at the boundaries with the assessor, as I recall, is $153,000 or so was the average assessed value.
And you can answer another question that was raised in the public hearing, that all real property that's not exempt, which would be public and nonprofit, so any BLM land, any state forest land, any government land, any post office, any school, any church, anything that's exempt from real property taxation would not pay these taxes. But any property that currently pays property taxes, such as businesses, commercial structures, and private property owners, would all be subject to it. Is that correct?
Commissioner Stewart, Commissioner Sorenson, that's correct.
Because one of the people testifying specifically asked, does this just include houses? Or does it include businesses and houses? And I think the answer is, it includes both. Did the polling ever poll the question of the timing of the district? The word permanent versus, which is, I guess, required to be in there because it is a permanent district. It's permanent until it's dissolved. The issue of, of putting a time limit on the district. It's permanent for five years, but it goes away unless it's re-approved by the voters.
Chairman Stewart, Commissioner Sorenson, it's, when we did the polling, it was for a permanent taxing district.
Okay, with no, with no?
It was only a result of the polling and a conversation with the proponents where there was a suggestion that we take a look at, you know, this, I think it was, I'm not exactly sure how we identified that, that language in statute, probably county council had mentioned that it was in there. Any rate, there is language that says that you may, as long as you form it, you may dissolve it. When you form it and you have a date specific, as long as it's within 10 fiscal years, but you do need to identify whether it's, whether it's within five or 10, or, you know, there needs to be a date in your formation documents.
Yeah.
But no, we did not have that concept at the time of the polling. It was just a permanent.
That's more of a fallback that, that voters gave their perspective on a permanent district. They didn't give, in this polling that's been done, they didn't give their perspective on whether they liked the idea a better, better if it were, had the, had the sunset date. But you're, you're saying that, that in moving towards a sunset date, there's a little more acceptance to the idea.
Chairman Stewart and Commissioner Sorenson, there, there appears to be, I think in a, if we, historically, we would typically do two polls in order to sort of figure out what the issues were in poll number one, and then see if we did anything better with that information in poll number two. And so, that's, we just don't have time for that in this particular case. But in a perfect world, we might have gone back out to the voters and seen if there really were a difference between what was initially proposed and what's being proposed now in terms of the nature of permanence.
Okay. Do you have any questions for us as far as what needs to be resolved today? In your mind, what, what decisions have to be made today other than holding a public hearing within the proposed district?
Commissioner, Chairman Stewart, Commissioner Sorenson, I think Commissioner Bozovic did a nice job of laying out those, really the, the issues that need to be addressed. Is, one is the, the date of dissolution, or if you want to pursue dissolution. Second one is the, the language from Veneta, city of Veneta. And then, what I didn't touch on, but I think I probably should, is that the other thing we had done in the initial initiating order was that we suggested there will be two public hearings located in Harris Hall. And so, the second order now, the order that we have before you today actually specifies the 6:00 PM, February 9th meeting at the Deepwoods facility in Elmira. So that's the other change.
Okay. And then, I think there were some other issues raised in the public hearing that I can't remember all of them, but one of them was, why are we creating a budget committee? And I think the answer to that is because there's a state law that says we will have a budget committee. So it's not our idea that we would have a budget committee, although I think it's a good idea to have citizens on budget committees. But it is a matter of state law to have a budget committee for any district. I think another issue was the question of police services outside of the district. And, and, and one of the people testifying commented that the district would run down a road, and that line was chosen because of the school district? Is that how the district was chosen?
Chairman Stewart, Commissioner Sorenson, in some cases, we were, when we were working with the proponents about how to determine the boundaries, I think what really drove it was response time. And then, the second thing that drove it was the elections. You need to make sure that you do follow at least some sort of existing line, what we were trying to really avoid.
Existing precinct line, so you'd know who was voting in the district.
Exactly. We did not want to have a, a couple people from a precinct.
Yeah, yeah. So, so my point is?
But I think the, I think I can anticipate your question, and it's, the sheriff talked to staff yesterday a little bit about aid and assist, and, you know, they, they routinely do, the sheriff does provide services to other communities. As you know, sheriff has sent a couple individuals out to Harney County to help Harney County patrol their roads when they're, in their time of need. And the, the issue is that he feels very comfortable that he could get other folks to help our department in times of need. I don't know quite how to answer the question that the individual raised about their neighbor across the street. My sense is, is that there would be absolutely no hesitation by the sheriff's dispatchers to order a car and a patroler to get out there and provide assistance. But I think it's probably an inherent question anytime that you're looking at carving out a county service district within a county. It's just, it's just the nature of a district within the bounds of the county, probably not that different a conversation. If we were to have this conversation about a countywide district, would that preclude, if your neighbor lived in, across the street, but in, in Lynn County or in Benton County, would, you know, would that mean if there was a sheriff in the, in the vicinity, would they absolutely not respond to that call? I do know, I think we have a representative from the sheriff's office here, and they may be able to better answer that question than myself.
Well, I think, isn't it correct to say, whether you're in this district or out of this district, you're going to get police services provided because of, of the requirement that the sheriff provide law enforcement services throughout the county? Now, the question is whether you're going to get enhanced police services. Now, my voters have voted for taxes to pay for police services. That's why we have a Eugene Police Department. Commissioner Farr's constituents have done the same, and Commissioners Lichen's constituents in Springfield have done the same. And to some extent, Commissioner, the other commissioners have cities wherein there is law enforcement or contracts for law enforcement. What this provides, if voters want to approve it, and I want to be clear, this is something we're putting out for public vote, if voters want to approve it, they can approve additional taxes for residents within the district to provide enhanced services. If they don't think it's worth it, they can make their own decision. If they read it all and say, maybe it will be good, they can vote for it. It's really, our issue is whether we're providing a fair opportunity for citizens to do all the work these advocates have done to come in here and, and say to us, hey, this is a proposal. They've scaled it back. This is a proposal we'd like you to put out for a vote. Okay? And I think that they deserve a lot of credit. There's a huge amount of volunteer work. Nobody paid them to do it. They're not going to get any additional help out of this thing than anybody that, that is against it, or votes no, or even votes yes. They're just doing it because they want to try to better their community. And I just want to say, I appreciate all their efforts. I also think we should try to protect the rights of the opponents and make sure that they are aware, we're having a voter's pamphlet, we're having explanatory statement, opponents and opponents are being appointed to that committee. It will not be written by us.
Before I go to Commissioner Bozovic, I'd like to insert myself. So, I think most of the questions that were presented to us during public testimony have been answered. But there was one by Ms. Templeton that talked about tax rates. She's checked around, which I appreciate that you did. What's critical to understand is, is what the taxing rates are for those various different counties. So, Lane County's permanent tax rate's a dollar twenty-eight per thousand. I don't know what Washington's permanent tax rate is off the top of my head, but when we analyzed Clackamas County and Multnomah County and Washington County, those counties, their permanent tax rate for their county is somewhere in the range of $3.50 to $4.50. So there's a considerable difference. So if Lane County took the $3.50 level, we would have an additional approximately $60 million to spend in this county for, for county services. That all wasn't paid for by timber dollars, but in the past, with the relationship that we had with the federal government on ONC lands, we received close to $16 million a year on average, the supplemented that helped make that difference up. So, that's when you start comparing different counties and the way they spend their money and how they allocate it and what they have, that's the real difference between Lane County and most other counties. We're in the lower portion of the $1.28 as compared to other, like, counties. So, that's the challenge that we've had. I think in the 11 years that I've been on the board, we've tried a public safety district as Commissioner Lichen shared the, what eventually happened with that. We also tried a income tax to fund for public safety. We finally, tried a couple other efforts, and then finally was successful with the jail enhancement. So, we're trying on our end. It's very, very difficult. This proposal, as was stated, came from a group of concerned citizens in an effort to try to find a way to improve service and response time and, and safety. I hear on a regular basis, and I know that it's different from you, I would say that if I wasn't exposed to this job, I would feel fairly safe at my home. But when I hear stories of emergency responders, by either ambulance or fire department having to respond to a situation, I, I would just imagine the situation in Veneta was that when they had that shooting recently and that one lady was shot, she called. You know, an ambulance can't immediately respond to that situation. They have to go to a secured site. So it requires the law enforcement to secure that. So, these are some of the challenges that we have, and, you know, Lord help us, that doesn't happen to us that feel safe, but they do. And I think that's the challenge that we're faced as a board, is how do we improve our safety and, and do it in a manner that the system can afford and what they want. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Bozovic. I'm hoping we have a couple, two or three more items before the lunch break. And I'd like to, I know he knows specifically what we need to do to move this item forward. So I'd like to, to give you the floor for your comments, and then in hopes you give us guidance on a motion to move forward, we can work on.
Thank you. So, I, I think we've talked a lot about why not a countywide, wide district. And, and there's, between the metro plan and the fact that we didn't have a citizens committee from the entire county approach us, we had a citizens group from Fern Ridge approach us. And I believe it is the Fern Ridge Crime Watch, not just the Veneta Crime Watch, that approached us. I just want to touch real quick about the part, the idea of a parcel tax. We don't have the ability to do that under current state law. So, you know, that, that's just not an option to us. We have to, taxation in Oregon for property tax has to be based on assessed value. And the voters have set that clear to us, and one of the reasons why we only have a dollar twenty-eight permanent tax rate is it was fixed in Measure 5 by a vote of the people. And additionally, the, the growth of assessed values has been fixed in, in additional measures, 47 and 50. So, we have a set property tax rate we're allowed to levy and a set growth of assessed values under state law. And it's interesting, I did a real quick look up, and Ms. Lember, I think you, your math may be a little bit off, you're only going to be due $482 per year at a dollar sixty-seven per thousand. If there's two, I see two tax accounts under Wayne and Becky. So, adding those both together, that's, that's the way the math comes up. I will talk a little bit about response outside the district. Right now, I live behind Elmira High School, outside the city of Veneta. If I have a call on my street, I see, you know, I hear gunshots from my neighbor, I will get a Veneta contract deputy out there under a mutual aid for a high priority call. If it's a life, you know... If it's a life, you know, and death situation, the boundaries get ignored. Now, if I get a burglary at my house, and it happens overnight, and I don't see it till the next day, and it's a cold case basically, and I call, I will not get a Vanita contract deputy, because I'm not inside that contract boundary or the city limits. That's the big difference when you start talking about boundaries. Mutual aid happens all over the place. There were officers that came out to the shooting on Jean's Road from the city of Eugene, because that was a high priority call. In fact, that particular case, EMS had to wait almost thirty minutes before they could respond to the woman that was lying on the ground bleeding, because there was no deputies on duty at the time the call came in, and they had to pull somebody basically from home to respond. Yeah, and who knows whether that might have made a difference or not, whether that woman lived or died. But, you know, that's the current state of the thing. And right now, the citizens of Vanita are actually subsidizing my high priority call response, because they are paying for at least twenty hours of coverage a day that somebody can respond outside the city limits to my house if I have a high priority call. But I'm not getting any subsidy at all when it comes to low priority calls like property crime and all those nuisance crimes, that if we could actually start investigating and finding the people responsible for, which are mostly people that have drug addiction problems, get them into treatment and off the streets, we'd have a whole lot lower property crime level. And that's really part of what this district, you know, talking to the folks forming it, is really about. It's going beyond just responding after the fact with violent violence. It's about dealing with those, you know, property crimes and getting to people sooner in their criminal career. So, that's why Vanita, why Fern Ridge, it was this group of citizens that are proposing this, they're, they just asked for the board's help in moving it forward. And so, that's really where this comes down to, and we've already talked about business properties are going to be paying, and that includes some of the mills that are inside the district. So, if you think your six hundred dollar tax bill's hefty, wait until you see Seneca or Swanson or some of the other folks. So, what I would like to get back to is that question of a permanent rate, and it was in the poll, and it was a question specific to it, and it actually changed the yes/no vote from forty-seven, forty-three to forty-four percent yes to forty-six percent no. It was that big of a swing, basically a five-point swing, when it was pointed out to people specifically that this was going to be a permanent rate. So, I do think it's important that we do put the dissolution date in here, so people understand this is not forever. And I want to read real quick from statute, ORS 198-805, Item Three. If the county board finds that a proposed county service district may not be needed in the future, or that indefinite existence may significantly discourage future boundary changes. That's a big point, because one of the things about this district is, as I sit here, and I've got two city councilors from Junction City in the audience, there's more interest in this than just Fern Ridge. There's a lot of people watching. So, we've got Junction City in the audience, I know Crestwell's very interested in how this moves forward. Having that dissolution date out there, and I would propose five years, gives us the ability to dissolve the district and reform it with new boundaries, and maybe even a different tax rate. Because other people are going to look at the Fern Ridge area and the subsequent drop in property crime when we do have twenty-four seven coverage with backup, and it's going to move outside that district. You know, one of the things that's fairly interesting is, the criminal element talks amongst itself, it knows where we're vulnerable. That's why they kind of live outside of Vanita and then do their crimes, move in and out of Vanita right now, from the suburbs of, you know, if you could call Elmira a suburb of Vanita. And a lot of the crime happens just outside the Vanita city limits, during, you know, when they know that there's actually a deputy on duty in Vanita. So, I think for that purpose only, the ability to change district boundaries in the future, we need to have that dissolution date set out there. It also means that the board can dissolve the district without having to go through a major vote of the people. It'd be a lot simpler process. So, you know, it doesn't, you know, right now, if we don't have a dissolution date, the only way this ends is if there's enough people that bring it forward, get it on the ballot, and there's a positive vote to dissolve the district from the citizens within the district, which is a pretty cumbersome thing for a citizen to take on. As it sits, if we put a dissolution date into the board order, the board can simply look at this, take input from the citizens that say, you know what, we need to either change the district, or we'd like to see it go away, we can vote to dissolve it, it doesn't have to go back out to the public, it just simply terminates at that time. So, that's the whole point. And I think five years is a reasonable time period to see, you know, whether this is working. Who knows, in five years, we may resolve the timber issue. I think it's wishful thinking, but you never know. Because that's really how, why Lane County only has a dollar twenty-eight per thousand. Back in the seventies, if you took it in today's dollars, the timber industry used to put over a hundred and fifteen million dollars a year into Lane County's coffers. This last re-up of the SRS put nine million dollars in one single year into county coffers. You can understand why we have this problem. It's the failure of the federal government to manage our timberlands and provide that promised revenue under the ONC Act. So, maybe that will resolve in five years, and we won't need to go out and ask people. But for me, this is definitely something where we've got a group of citizens that are asking to solve the problem with the tools that are available in state law. And a special county district is one of the ways they can do that. And I'm not going to stand in the way of the local control being offered here, where a group of citizens wants to move ahead with an idea where they would want to tax themselves, and there'll be a vote of the people involved. So, with that, I would propose maybe that the board asks staff to come back this afternoon with a board order that not only includes the city of Vanita's request about a citizens' advisory committee, because I think that is very important to continue to keep the city of Vanita involved. Unfortunately, I don't see a representative from the city here, but I know that is very important to their council, that there is an advisory committee. And in fact, that was one of the things in polling that actually polled positively, was having the advisory committee involved. And also, to revise the dissolution date to five years in the board order, and if we can pick it up at that time and discuss and vote on it. I don't think it'd be premature to try and wordsmith it as we sit here, because it is a very legal process under ORS, and I don't want to screw up by trying to wordsmith something here and violate the statutes.
Okay. Other comments? Is it, Mr. Kyler, is it possible to bring that this afternoon back with those additions and corrections?
Chairman Stewart, we absolutely can. I think we'd need just three head nods from the board to make that occur.
Are we on the mark with the recommendations Commissioner Bozovich just stated? Looks like everybody's in agreement. Okay. Well, again, I want to thank the citizens for coming for this conversation. It looks like if the board order is approved this afternoon, that we'll hopefully see you again on February the ninth at 6:00 PM in Elmira at Deep Woods. So, with that, we got one other item, I believe, that is specific to this. Do we want to go ahead and take it up before? Okay, so it's Item E, it's Order 16-01-12-08, it's in the matter of appointing a committee of three to five individuals to draft an impartial, simple, and understandable explanatory statement for the May 17, 2016 voters pamphlet regarding the question of forming a county service district to be known as the Fern Ridge Community Policing District. Again, Mr. Kyler.
Chairman Stewart, could I, I just want to make sure that that order, that order follows your formation order? I think that would be...
Okay. We'll move that to the afternoon, then?
Yeah, I think you'd be getting it backwards.
Okay. That's fine. So, we will go ahead, and I'll move that to the afternoon in conjunction with the previous Order D, which was 16-01-12-07. So, thank you. I'd like to skip back quickly in the agenda to Public Works and ask Ms. McKinney if she'd like to come forward. I'm very, very sorry that we weren't able to take this earlier today, but this item is 6A. It's the first reading and setting, second reading and public hearing for ordinance number 16-01. It's in the matter of amending Lane Code, Chapter 16, to an act legislation and housekeeping changes, file number 509-PA15-05615, setting the second reading and public hearing for January 16, 2016, Harris Hall at 1:30. Is there anything you need to add to that, or?
There's not, Chair, unless you have any questions for us. This is just the first reading. We'll be back before you for a public hearing if you make your motion.
Thank you. Any questions? If we don't, I would entertain a motion approving the first reading and setting the second reading for ordinance 16-01 for January 26, 2016, at Harris Hall at 1:30.
So moved.
Second. Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Pass unanimously.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mokhaiske, Item 7A is announcements. Do you have announcements?
Do you want to do that now?
Sure.
Um, I'll try to be brief here. I wanted to just make a note about the city of Eugene, state of the city last week, which we had a number of folks from Lane County attend, and they did an outstanding job there. And then, of course, last night, the Springfield State of the City event, the Commissioner Lycan and Commissioner Farr, as well as a number of our staff, were at, and that as well was a really great event, and good things happening both in Eugene and Springfield. And it was great last night to see the Swanson Group recognized by the mayor, and Bob Kiefer recognizes Citizen of the Year in Springfield, and all the other great work that's happening in Springfield. I want to share with you some accomplishments from our community health centers, and just, you know, this is a focus area for us as an organization in the next year, and we've had some great successes with our community health centers, so I just wanted to make a note of that. From our team in Health and Human Services, we've increased the number of patients served in 2015, opened our sixth primary care clinic at the Delta Oaks Clinic. We've recruited staff in all of our clinics and all of our roles to support the growth of our community health centers, recruited more than ten additional primary care providers to our community, which is really outstanding, because we all can appreciate the competitive nature of primary care providers nationally, so bringing folks from throughout the region and country to come to our community and provide services is great. We expanded integration of behavioral health to all of our primary care clinics, provided dental prevention services to children throughout Lane County, and continue to strengthen our community health center's financial performance. In 2016, our focus in the community health centers is to improve, continue to improve access to care for our patients, to improve the performance of our clinical quality metrics, to continue to work and build the skill and commitment to our staff, improve efficiency, and make sure, finally, that we are financially sustainable in our community health centers. We've had a lot of growth, and so one of the areas that we're working on, that I'm working on with our Health and Human Service and Community Health Center staff, is making sure that we are financially sustainable in the long term. And on that note, I also wanted to share with the board that at the opportunity last Friday, along with the Marion County Administrator, the Clackamas County Administrator, the Lynn County Administrator, and the Jefferson County Administrator, we made a trip to Salem and met with Clyde Sakai, who many of you may know is right now the interim director of the Oregon Health Authority. He has been in several roles with the state of Oregon for over twenty years, and has been the director of the Department of Administrative Services, but is the interim director right now of the Oregon Health Authority. We also met with the CFO for the state, George Naughton, which many of you may know, and George is filling in as the interim director of administrative services. So, we had a really, really great meeting, and given all the transition that's occurred, particularly in the executive branch of the state over the past year, we wanted to reestablish the relationship between the administrators in counties around the state and the administrators in state government. And so, we had a great opportunity there. I want to share with the board that our plan is to continue to have regular meetings with Mr. Sakai and Mr. Naughton, hopefully quarterly, on a quarterly basis on various topics, but we expressed our, our interests and priorities are largely around public safety, transportation, and healthcare. So, this conversation that I just had around our community health centers and the growth that we've had, we also want to make sure that we're in alignment with what the state agencies are seeing and the federal policy changes could be. So, I'll have more to report to you there, but just wanted to share that I was really pleased with the communication and relationship building and opening the dialogue with our peers at the state. And I think they also have a, an understanding of the difference between cities and counties, and the role the counties play, in particular as agents of the state and carrying out state services at the local level, how that really is different, you know, the roles of counties and cities are different, and so the state's relationship with counties is unique and important. So, I was pleased to hear that they're, of their understanding and appreciation for county roles throughout the state. Finally, I just wanted to make mention of a new five-a-day wellness challenge that we are launching here in Lane County. So, yeah, you're familiar with the Race Around the World Challenge that we had, we had the Fitbits, to incentivize health and wellness in our organization, and this goes along with our priority and theme of improving the health and wellness of our employees, getting employees back to work quicker, and ultimately reducing costs for health in our organization. The Race Around the World Challenge was a great effort, we had a lot of success, and around 260 employees participated in that. We're now launching, in two weeks, we'll be launching a five-a-day wellness challenge where we are encouraging everyone in our organization to form teams of up to three to five members per team, and asking folks to track the number of fruits and vegetables that you eat each day. So, this is a fun exercise for us to, again, find a way, as we talk about health and wellness and active living, to also talk about the healthy foods that we're eating. So, we'll have more to report to you on this, but I just wanted to make note of that. Of course, we have five commissioners here, so encourage three to five of you together to form a team, and we can do that throughout our organization and track healthy eating, and we'll report back to you on it. But again, just a focus that we're having to make sure that we're talking about and focusing on, and encouraging healthy activities throughout our organization with our employees. Thank you, Mr. Chair, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All right. So, County Council is not with us, I don't know if there's any announcements, we do have an executive session.
Yes, yeah.
So, we'll move that executive session to the afternoon. I'd like to, if possible, I'd like to go ahead and break recess for our lunch, and we'll take the rest of the activity. We have a couple, a public hearing in regards to our performance auditor position and the code, and then we do also have a few items that we rolled over to this afternoon, and we have the HACSA Housing and Community Services meeting this afternoon. So, Steve?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do have an executive session.
I'd like to do that in the afternoon, is that possible, or does it have to be done?
We can do that. The only issue is that we did have a Commissioner Sorensen had asked for staff from Land Management to be available, Ms. McKinney is available until one o'clock, but not after one.
Okay. Well, we will do that now, then, so let me get to my executive session material.
I haven't had any.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. So, at this time, the Board of Commissioners will meet an executive session to consult with County Council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. This executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192.660 subsection two, subsection H, which allows the Board of Commissioners to meet an executive session for the purposes listed above. We will not make any decisions in executive sessions. At the conclusion of executive session, we will be in recess until 1:30, when the board will reconvene. Executive session will be up in the conference room upstairs. So, at this time, we are entering...